Well, and it occurred to me as some of y'all were walking in a little bit wet. The last time we had a big public meeting for this process, it was a snowstorm. So this is nothing. And we should be thankful for the rain. So we'll, we'll take that. As you all know, we've been working on this for, for quite some time now. We are getting close to the end. You all are going to see a lot of information tonight with regard to all aspects of the plan, the park and recreation plan, the trail plan, the opportunity areas, which are those vacant properties in the city, and the FM 407 corridor study. So we're really excited to share this with you. There's certainly going to be some opportunities for input and guidance. We want to make sure we're on the right track. And unless something has changed, or unless there's a lot of, unless there's some changes to be made after tonight, a lot, we're scheduled to bring a draft to you all on September 27th and then give you all time to review that before a formal adoption. So with that, I will turn it over to Ron and let you take it from there.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate it. We're really excited to be here. Tonight will be reflective of nine, 10 months of intensive work, public meetings, staff meetings, just all kinds of meetings and analysis. And Paul gave you an overview of the different aspects, and we have people, two people joining us via Zoom from our corporate office in North Carolina specifically for Parks and Rec and the Trails Plan. They're highly specialized in that, and so they will be speaking to that. So we, here's the agenda. Well, let me go ahead and introduce the rest of the team here. Ashton's stand-up. Ashton is one of our planners, and he's heading up the opportunity area plans and has been instrumental in the planning throughout the whole process. And then some of y'all have met, some of you have not met Eric, Eric Willhite. Eric joined us two and a half, three months ago, and he is in charge of all of our public work at this point. He has a lot of experience, both working on the public side and working on the private side, so he's been a huge asset to us. And with that, I want to just give you a brief summary of findings from the last nine, 10 months. Parks and Rec, and Rachel is going to go into this more. We had a demographic and trends analysis. I don't know how many of y'all received the survey, but it did not go to all the citizens. It went to a scientifically selected group of citizens that, based on U.S. Census and some other things, would be reflective of the, of the community. And then we also did our existing park inventory and analysis, and along with benchmarking and needs assessment, program assessment, financial assessment, one of our other consultants, Michael Schwetz with ETC, has done a phenomenal job on working closely with Phil and others in the parks. The trail system, Catherine will be going over that and looking at existing trails, future trails, biking specifically in order to get grants, safe routes to schools, and several other things. I've primarily been working on the Village Connection, the 407 Trail, and we're going to be presenting some of our findings from that a little bit later. As I said, Ashton has been diligently working with the opportunity area plans along with our financial consultant, Catalyst, who has been looking at all the different options on each of the tracks and what's the financial implications of some of the options. As Ashton goes through his, there will be several options, and we will be directly asking the council members and P and Z for interaction on those because ultimately the plan will only have one option. So our goal is to narrow those options down. We've already worked with staff on all of those options. We've refined them. And then our goal tonight specifically is one decision that we'd like to make is on those opportunity area plans. And then Eric will be presenting the Thoroughfare Master Plan. And one thing that is not a major category, but is a part of our deliverables to the city, is looking at all the city ordinances in place, all the overlay districts, all the PDs, and looking at how will the opportunity area plans impact those with some recommendations for council to consider to make changes to some of the existing ordinances in order to facilitate what we will be presenting. And we had this same slide in our last P and Z and council workshop. The inventory analysis has all been done, the visioning and goals through multiple meetings and public engagement, and we'll look at that in just a minute. We are in the process of making the final recommendations, and Parks and Rec and Trails, I believe, will already be presenting their recommendations, and then ultimately the final, the final draft. The, here's, this is not all of them. We've added five or six meetings to these for you on council. You know, we presented last week on golf cart opportunities, but the faded ones are meetings that we've completed, and then the more vibrant ones are the ones we have left. Under council, the land use meeting, that's, that's tonight, and as Paul mentioned, we will be presenting y'all the draft for your review. We still owe the leadership team, which are all the civic directors, a summary of findings of all of them. Actually, most, everybody on the leadership team is here, so they'll be hearing all of this, and then we will also be presenting them with a draft to, to review. And the, we actually did the last work session, the inner department. We had that this morning or this afternoon at 12 o'clock with Phil's entire team in the Parks and Rec Department. The, here are some very brief findings from community engagement, and what I want to emphasize on this slide is community engagement was not only the ice storm night where the entire community was invited to participate. It also included the asset mapping with staff, the asset mapping with council and P and Z, and the asset mapping with the Parks Board. So that, well, and then we also had community engagement with a group of teenagers, a community engagement with some Parks and Rec enthusiasts to get their input. So a lot has gone into, into these. And each of these we'll be covering a little bit more later on, but as you can see, well, I'm going to just touch on the Village Connection, that the Village Connection is, has been welcomed by the citizens, and for the most part, we've met with most of the landowners along 407, and for the most part, very much embracing and looking forward to it, realizing that Paul's and the staff's vision for this will really, should help enhance retail, therefore tax dollars to the city, and also in tax connect, I mean, enhance connectivity of the citizens. And under the Trails one, that was something that came through as important on that one. The needs assessment, this is the first slide for Rachel. So if we can get Rachel to zoom on, I see you here. Hey, Rachel.
Hey, good evening.
There you are. You're on the big screen now. And Rachel, if you'll just say next, I'll progress the slides for you.
All right. So Ron, are you going to share the presentation, or should, I have it up on my screen. I can just go from there if that's easiest for everyone.
Oh.
Sounds like it is.
We're going to cut to the presentation, Rachel, so you're going to be minimized in the corner, and then we'll have the presentation up on the screen. Oh, you'll be, you'll be completely gone, but we'll hear you, Rachel.
Right, it's a little hard to hear Ron, so I'm going to just start with the introduction and the needs assessment findings unless someone jumps up and tells me to stop. So my name is Rachel Cotter. I am director of our Civic Spaces group up here in North Carolina, and I've dedicated pretty much my entire career, coming up on 20 years now, to parks and recreation, planning and design. It's certainly a passion of mine because I get to wake up and travel around the country visiting fantastic park systems such as yours. So really happy to be here tonight and present the findings of this plan so far. As Ron mentioned, we've spent several months looking at many, many data points to draw a few conclusions as a baseline for developing recommendations for the future. I have been there several times. I have visited a representative sample of your parks, incredibly impressed, and will be diving a little bit deeper into the findings of the park assessments. So in terms of the needs assessment, Ron mentioned the comprehensive approach we took to community engagement, both a broad, community-wide level, but also very deep in terms of some focus groups and, excuse me, specific information. And one of the things we did was send out the scientific survey, so this is statistically valid. We do get a wonderful representation, both from a demographics, but also a geographic distribution of respondents. And one of the things that really stuck out to me was that the City of Highland Village was rated 30% above the U.S. average with resident satisfaction and the overall quality of recreation programs and services. So y'all should be very, very proud of that. Give your staff a high five next time you see them out working hard. That's an incredible statistic and result that, that you should really sing praises about. So some additional views and opinions of the Parks and Recreation System across Highland Village. From a resident's perspective, there was consensus that parks add to the quality of life in the community, they're an essential public service, and they are safe. So we don't always see that, the safety aspect of this, so that's another really great indicator. To have a safe park system is incredibly important to usership. And then the majority of residents believe the city should prioritize investments in parks and recreation that create connections and develop a sense of community, promote health and wellness programming, and ensure affordability to users. So those are all very much in alignment with what we abstracted as your community values through the community engagement process. Next slide. One of the questions we like to ask routinely is barriers to participation. So if we're looking here, we're looking at barriers to participation for parks, why your residents might not use them, and the top response was nothing. I am actively using the parks and facilities. Again, this is an outstanding response. I've been doing this for a long time, and I've actually never seen this as the top response. So your usership is high, people are using parks, they feel safe, they feel welcome. Those are all really great indicators. Usually we see a lack of information, they don't know what's offered, they're not enough time, they're too busy, as, as the top reasons or barriers to participation, but most folks there are using your parks, so that's really exciting. In terms of reasons that discourage trail use, the number one is lack of safe biking and walking connections to and from trails, followed by lack of information and lack of destinations. So when Catherine gets to the trail component, she's going to address ways and strategies from her findings that we might be able to address all of those things. Next slide. One of the questions that the scientific survey asks is around something called a priority investment rating. So this result we use to report out on where an agency should place priority as resources become available. So whether those are financial resources, or those are staffing resources, partnerships, physical assets, whatever they are, we want to look at the priority that your residents have placed on these. And the top, highest ranked priorities for facilities and amenities were greenways and trails with trailheads, water sports access, things like canoeing, kayaking, and paddleboarding, and an indoor recreation center. There's a few other, other things there with medium and lower priority, but we really want to focus on those top priorities. Next slide. We asked similar questions around programming and activities, and the top priorities or top desired programs are fitness and wellness programs, special events and festivals, outdoor movies and concerts, water sports, art programs, and aquatics programs. So I did find this a little bit interesting since there is quite a bit of water access with the lakes, and also several special events and festivals, but our program assessment will give us a little bit more insight into some of these results. Next slide. So I will be moving into the detailed park assessments. Again, we did visit each, our representative sample of the parks there in Highland Village. Next slide. And the things that we were looking at were park infrastructure, so probably the unseen things that really make a park go, whether it's utilities, or parking, or the number and quality of your amenities. Then general condition and maintenance, are parks well-kept? Are they clean? Are they well-maintained? Is there a replacement schedule? Are things looking like they're in good condition? We've already heard parks are perceived as safe by your residents, so that's a very good indicator of your condition and maintenance. The park character, if you do this for long enough and you visit enough park systems across the state or the country, you start to recognize certain character of an entire system. Some were built 100 years ago, and the infrastructure is old, but they tell some amazing stories. Some are very new and everything is shiny. Some really depict the model of the mini park, the neighborhood park, the community park, the regional park. So there's a lot of park characters out there. We like to identify it because it's a way that you can brand your parks in the future to make them really stand out as unique to Highland Village. And then user experience, so we're talking a lot about experience, the experience that your residents have and your visitors have at parks, and diversity of amenities. A system can either be known for a specific type of amenity, maybe it's a bat and ball community, maybe it's a community that really focuses on environmental education, so we start to see some things around that, or some communities really want to focus on a diversity of amenities and attracting people to the system because they can find lots of different types of opportunities. Next slide. So our assessment based on these individual assessment criteria, again, beautiful park system, providing a lot of diversity, high-quality facilities, the parks are clean. When we're looking at park infrastructure, numerous high-quality athletic fields that support competitive programs. There are some opportunities for environmental education. You have several natural and more passive parks, so that might be a recommendation as we move into that part of the plan. And then one thing we did notice too, just from a materials perspective, many playgrounds are using the engineered wood fibers. This does require a little bit more maintenance, so we might want to look at some overall park design standards, materiality, to help relieve some of that maintenance burden. And then from a general condition and maintenance perspective, your parks are clean. I wanted to bring in the implementation of copperus branch at some point in this presentation. We snuck it in here because it is really going to have such a profound impact on all of these areas, from park infrastructure to diversity amenities, park character, the user experience. It's really, it's really going to be a project for the community. Playground, the structures, they are meeting some contemporary recreational needs, but probably should start looking at upgrades, considering them as part of a future bond package. The diversity of amenities, we did find quite a diversity of amenities, so maybe not necessarily unknown for community, except that you're providing a lot of different amenities for various ages, user groups, and usership. So Pilot Knoll providing significant diversity of amenities from lake access to horseback riding, a diversity of athletic fields and courts. The trail system connects virtually to all the city's parks, and there is some undeveloped land in existing parks that as you reach your full build-out, there's not necessarily opportunity to build new parks, but you'll really want to take advantage of some of these undeveloped areas to uplift and refresh, providing some additional amenities where this vacant land occurs. From a park character perspective, and again, this is similar to user experience, the park character is something that, being a parks professional, you can really identify in the system, whereas the user experience, you're going to focus on, you know, how do I feel in the space? Is it welcoming? Is it safe? Are there good connections? So from a park character perspective, you know, there is certainly a unique lakefront park character across much of the system that is unique, that, you know, laid-back, lakeside lifestyle is very characteristic of the city's park system. And then some other things we noticed, that most parks exhibit a balance of programmed and undeveloped open space, which is really nice. You don't want to overprogram a park. You don't want to jam pack it with stuff. It's, it's really nice to have that balance of amenities where you can either have a programmed event, you know, bring your children, have a very active social environment, or, you know, leave and have some undeveloped open space just to simply enjoy and connect with nature. System-wide, an opportunity exists to adopt some design standards and provide some consistency among park furnishings, equipment, and signage. Again, this will help define and brand the Highland Village park system. And then finally, the user experience, it's welcoming, it's safe. People come from outside to enjoy and experience the parks in Highland Village. During our site visit, we talked a lot about experience and the different types of experiences and the length of experience that users can have when they come to the park system. Again, related to the lake, the lake, or five parks within the city, six square miles access Lake Lewisville, so that also helps with that defined character across the system. And then the department is very committed to providing high-quality user experiences in a variety of settings, and that's just so evident by the condition of the parks and the programs that they run. Next slide. So moving into programs, when we're doing a program assessment, and this was done by Proz Consulting, they are identifying core program areas. This is an assessment where they look at all the programs provided, they distilled them down into these core program areas, give them a description so we can build internal goals and outcomes around them moving forward, and so you can build brand about the things that you're already doing really well, and that's athletics, camps, community events, enrichment, and health and wellness. Next slide. Another piece of their assessment is an age segment analysis, and this is really intended to ensure that people of all ages are served by your programs. There's a good balance of programs across all of the age segments, as you can see here. If you look in the preschool column, it has the fewest number of primary programs, lots of secondary. So if there was any area or age segment that's underserved, it might be the preschool programs. And then with a growing populations and trends for the 65 and older age group, we're starting to get really nuanced with how we serve the 65-plus age group. My mom is a Zumba teacher. She's 70 years old. You have some very, very active older adults, and you have some people who might just want to take a little bit slower pace, but still want to connect with the environment, they want to be outside, they want to have a slower pace of activity. And so breaking these down further into maybe a 65 to 74 and a 75-plus group can help us program in a more nuanced way to serve all needs of our active adults. So another fairly typical assessment that's part of the program assessment is this classification distribution, and this is where we start moving into how programs and funding and finances are all related. And so when we start hearing things like cost recovery, a cost recovery is a very philosophical approach that a department can take to how much you want to subsidize various programs. And so this classification system helps you do that. Essential services are, you know, services that really should be provided to the community. They're expected, they're sound investment of public funds, you're going to have a lower cost recovery, a higher degree of subsidy for your essential services, and then moving up to important, and then the value added. So value added is on the spectrum, those really unique programs. It adds value to the community, but isn't necessarily required as, as like a life, a life skill, so to speak. And they can be supported by higher user fees, and they should require little to no subsidy. But again, this, this is a best practice. Many communities for all of their programs want very little cost recovery simply because they believe that they should be subsidizing most of their services. So if you, if you see here, this is a best practice distribution, but want these always to align with your cost recovery goals. If anything, perhaps a bit high in the essential services, so that is going to bring your cost recovery down overall. I know that Phil and Proz Consulting have worked closely together to start setting some best practices or some cost recovery goals for all of the programs, and that's really going to help increase your revenue and, and target that subsidy versus out-of-pocket payment goals for the community. So when it comes to pricing strategies, there's three major categories. The first is to price your programs around cost recovery, and the city's already doing that, so that's, that's exciting to know that that's on their mind. And then there's prime time and level of exclusivity. So you can see here, there's not an X next to about eight pricing strategies, so there are additional opportunities for the city to expand pricing strategies to meet some of those cost recovery goals. Next slide. So some other key findings from the program assessment, the cost of service analysis should be conducted and is being conducted on each program to understand the full cost of delivery. As I mentioned, the cost recovery targets are being established. A new pricing policy using expanded pricing strategies should be developed. Sponsorships and donations would help contribute to a sustainable earned income stream. And finally, expanded marketing could increase participation in programs and services. You already have an incredibly high turnout for your programs and services, but if looking for more expanding marketing. for more, expanding marketing could also help there. And then, the last component that we looked at was maintenance. And, your maintenance is really divided up, next slide, into six functional work areas. So, these are the primary areas that your maintenance staff, your park staff, are delivering services around, and that's urban forestry, trades, trails, a response team, athletic fields, and general parks and grounds. Those are all fairly typical, and, you know, a strong way to categorize your work areas. Next slide. So, some of the findings that we discovered throughout the process, this is interviews with staff and several subsequent, subsequent focus groups and one-on-ones with staff and with Phil and his team. Maintenance efforts are expansive and operate on a tiered maintenance mode system. This is a best practice. So, this is, when we say a tiered system, it's level one, two, and three. So, level one is going to be your high-visibility areas, it's going to be your athletic fields, it takes an intense amount of manpower to maintain those facilities. Level two, right in the middle, and then level three is some of your more naturalistic areas, those that aren't as visible to the public, that require a little bit less effort. A formalized, documented, and detailed maintenance management program, management plan, it guides a division's work. This is excellent to see, and certainly a best practice as well. And, we did find that, for the most part, staff do have the necessary equipment and resources to perform their tasks. So, digging in a little bit deep to more detail on the general fund budget and the staffing levels, to see if those are all adequate. Actually, these are broken down into the general fund, the leased park budgets, and the 4B budget. So, we broke down the parks that are funded by each of these. So, starting with the general fund, we're looking at some unit prices, basically, so we can understand how they compare to best practices, which is a cost-per-acre type of metric. And so, for your general fund, your parks funded out of your general fund, the department is certainly using best practices of this unit cost method, which enables them to determine which lines of service are more effective and efficient to perform in-house than contract out. So, you know, if I'm going to hire someone and it costs them $5 per hour, or it costs me $2 an hour, I mean, if I've got the skill, I'd probably want to do that in-house versus contracted out. And so, the city is operating that way, that's great to hear. Staffing, we also found is adequate to manage a level-two standard, which is the standard required for maintenance of these parks. And, the best practice, or the, it requires one FTE for 20 acres of maintained parkland, which is about the best practice. And, this is just a breakdown here of the current full-time equivalent staff, those that are planned, and a calculated contracted FTE. So, looking at a total of 19, but distributed across three different types of ways to get staffing man-hours, so to speak. Next slide. So, these parks are your leased parks, and they are funded with your leased park budget. And, we did find here that leased parks are underfunded by about $150,000 annually. The project team supports the budget request for two additional maintenance workers for the maintenance of leased parks, specifically Pilot Knolls and Preparus Park, especially with the future investment at Copperus Park. And then, finally, the parks that are funded by the 4B budget, being Doubletree Ranch and Trails. So, a significant portion of your maintenance budget here does go to Doubletree Ranch. It's beautiful, the experience is amazing, and you can certainly see why it requires that level of attention and detail, that level of investment to maintain a park at that level. Where we're seeing some shortages is, and the trails. And, with the extensive trail system, the extensive trailheads and areas that are landscaped, we do think that there could be some additional funding for maintenance. We would say that the maintenance of trails is underfunded by about $50,000 annually. But, the current staffing levels and funding for Doubletree is sufficient. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions about the Parks and Recreation piece, before Catherine moves into the trails.
Does anybody have any questions they want to ask? I had a couple. So, going, going back to your last point about the, the $50,000 of underfunding for our trails, can you hear me, by the way?
Yes, I can, thank you.
What would, what would your study show that, that $50,000 a year in additional trails funding be used for?
Well, this is really just based on a cost-per-acre. So, I think the recommendations, now that we have what the level of additional funding is, the recommendations would dive a little bit deeper into what that would be used for in alternative, and something we might consider as a recommendation is, does the, do the extensive trailheads and areas that are landscaped, there is a lot of irrigation, are those, do we need those? Do you need those? Or, can we pull back a little bit on the enhanced landscape along some of the trails? So, from our interviews with staff, anyway, you know, there is a lot of maintenance around the trailheads, the landscaping, keeping trails clean, repairing trails as they age over time.
And then, the next one I had was on the, the point about the FTEs. So, I just, just want to make sure I understood what you were saying. Was that a statement, do we need 19 more FTEs, according to your, your study, or, or that we have?
No, you have a total of, so, FTEs, full-time equivalent staff can be provided in a combination of ways. You currently have 11 on staff, two are being planned for, and, an equivalent of six are contracted services. So, you're good there.
Thank you.
Yep.
And, one thing that I wanted to add, when Rachel was talking about some of the cost-recovery stuff, that's really a council and city philosophical issue. The city of Charleston, South Carolina, they are 100% funded by fees. Other cities feel like that's not equitable to all segments of their population. And so, you know, they might be higher in non-resource funding of parks. And, working with Phil and Rachel and everybody, we, we identified areas for some additional resources or funding through fees, or through sponsorships, or whatever. So, that's a, Rachel will give some recommendations, but it's really a philosophical choice for the city, city to make. Eric and I, on Sunday night, got back from four days in New York City, we toured something like 15 parks with the Commissioner of Parks for New York, who is now on our staff as our urban planner. And, there was a 600, no, I forget, 4, 600 million-dollar park that was entirely funded through private donations. And, we're not in New York City, we don't want to be New York City, but there are opportunities for some private funding. And, there is the, I forget the official name, the Highland Village Parks Foundation, that Phil and I are working with them on funding some improvements at a park, but that's certainly another avenue. So, Rachel, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Catherine. If we can pop Catherine on the big screen, so people can know her for a second, and then we'll go to the slideshow.
Thanks, Ron. Hi, everyone. I'm Catherine Zarang. I am a senior bicycle and pedestrian planner at McAdams. I'm based in our Durham, North Carolina office, and I've been a bicycle and pedestrian planner for about 10 years now. So, today, I'm going to go over a brief overview of kind of where we left off with our previous presentation in the city council several months back. And so, this builds on the existing conditions analysis work that we've done for Highland Village's existing trail network, and looks at where the opportunities and constraints are of the existing network, and then where can we, you know, fill in those trail gaps, improve the on-street bicycle facilities, you know, and improve connections to destinations that may be currently lacking. Because, from the, from our last presentation, we did, in our review of the existing trail network, Highland Village already has an expansive trail network, and also, it's very well-maintained. So, we're really focusing in on building out, you know, that last 25% of the network, so that Highland Village can have a complete and comprehensive trail network. And then, also, we were scoped to make improvements to the on-street bicycle network as well. And so, this first slide shows an overview of our opportunities and constraints analysis. So, this is kind of similar to, you know, parks assessment, a needs assessment. So, we're looking at all of the constraints of the existing trails network and on-street bicycle network, you know, where are the barriers, where, you know, it's difficult for folks to be able to access by, you know, bike or on foot. And then, also, where are the opportunities to build new trail corridors and expand on the on-street bicycle network, so that people can have more access to those destinations? So, this really builds on the existing conditions analysis. And then, it also incorporates a lot of the community engagement efforts and results that we received from, you know, our open house, focus group meetings, the survey, et cetera. So, where, where have people, residents and visitors, really identified, you know, needs within the trail and bicycle network? And so, this, this map here really highlights all of the opportunities and constraints within Highland Village, to be able to build out and expand the trail and bike network. And so, just to kind of explain the map here, so, the map shows all the existing sidewalks, which are in light blue, the existing public trails, which are in dark green, the existing private trails, which are in that lime-light green, and then, also, the existing bike lanes, which are in that dark blue. And then, on top of that, we've circled all the different opportunities and constraints areas. And, of course, in the report, we have kind of a write-up on each of these 15 themes that we've identified. These are the critical areas where we really need to focus on when we're drafting our trail and bicycle network recommendations. And so, just to kind of briefly go over some of those themes here. So, you know, in meetings with staff, and of course, all the input that we receive from the community, and then also, just in looking at, you know, through our site visit, field work, and existing conditions analysis, overwhelmingly, you know, people really focused in on that critical need of having improved connectivity to the schools within Highland Village. Then, followed by that, people really wanted to have improved access to the park, to the parks in Highland Village, and then, of course, to the lakefront as well. And then, after that, people really wanted to improve the access to shopping centers and commercial areas within Highland Village. Also, we did see a need for improved neighborhood bicycle connectivity. While we do have some existing bicycle lanes on some of the main corridors, it's like Highland Shores Boulevard and Selmair Lane, we still do not have any existing on-street facilities within neighborhoods, so that folks can feel comfortable biking between their, you know, residences and to the destinations, especially schools and parks. And then, followed by that, we also highlighted some areas where we really need to improve and expand on multimodal connectivity. And so, that really gets at a couple things. We're looking at, you know, what are the intersections along the roadway corridors? What do they look like for bicycle pedestrian connectivity? Do we have safe crosswalks? Do we have pedestrian signals? Are there facilities for bicyclists, signage, signalization as well, that's allowing bicycles to get safely through the intersection? We're also looking at connections between existing bicycle pedestrian facilities. So, connections between existing sidewalks and bike lanes, trails and sidewalks, trails and bike lanes. So, making sure that the entire network is seamless, so that people will really be able to, you know, whatever mode they're using, really be able to access the entire network, you know, comfortably and reliably. And then, next, the sixth opportunity and constraints, looking at regional trail network connectivity. So, we already have a connection along Highland Shores, I mean, Highland Village Road to the KD Trail and to the Light Rail Station, which is amazing. So, we really focused in on, how do we make sure we're improving those, that amenity there? So, for that section, we really looked at intersection enhancements. But then, also, there are other areas where we do not have existing bicycle and pedestrian connectivity to neighboring communities, such as, you know, Copper Canyon. We have some connectivity to Flower Mountain and Double Oak along Justin Road, but we're also looking at, how can we improve that, so that people can easily bike and walk between neighboring communities? And then, also, some of the barriers, so some of the constraints of the network. So, the rail corridor is a huge barrier for bicycle and pedestrian connectivity and access within Highland Village. It really creates that kind of barrier between, you know, for north and south connectivity with the existing trail network, and then also, with the existing bicycle and sidewalk network as well. With such limited crossings along that corridor, we really need to focus on, where can we make improvements to the on-street network that already has rail crossings? And what are the opportunities to build on previous work to create additional connections across the rail corridor? Also, in terms of, kind of speaking to what I mentioned a little bit earlier, some of those on-street bicycle facilities that we already have existing, which is great, but our bicycle lanes along Highland Shores Boulevard, and also, along Selmair Lane, those bicycle lanes are actually very narrow, they're only four feet wide, which the, the state standard for Texas, and then also, the standard for, at the national level, is at least a five-foot minimum bike lane. So, definitely need to expand the width of the existing bike lanes. And then, also, a lot of the existing pavement markings are very worn, and it's difficult to even see that that is a bike lane. And so, that creates both a safety issue for both bicyclists and motorists, because without having those clear, visible pavement markings and signage, you can't really tell that that is an actual bicycle facility in some areas along both of those corridors. And then, also, related to that, you know, making improvements along FM 407, I know we're also doing the corridor study, but within the Trailmaster Plan, we do have proposed improvements along Justin Road. You know, it is also a barrier, this corridor, especially getting between Highland Village and Flower Mountain, making sure that we have good intersection facilities for bicyclists and pedestrians, who are wanting to cross between jurisdictions. But then, also, for folks who are just staying within Highland Village and want to access the commercial destinations along the corridor, how can we make improvements and have access points from Highland Village to Justin Road? Also, we, we looked at the, we did a trail maintenance report within our existing conditions analysis as well. So, this opportunities and constraints map also highlights some of the trail maintenance issues. And like I mentioned, the trails are already well-maintained, but there were a couple areas where we saw some need for improvement. And then, lastly, just overall trail connector opportunities, there are several areas within Highland Village where there are opportunities to expand existing Highland Village where there are opportunities to expand existing trails and to close gaps where there is gaps in the network. Next slide?
I had already progressed it, so sorry about that. It's the priorities slide?
Oh, no. Ron, can you go back to the draft network? Because I was still on the first slide with opportunities and constraints. So we'll need to be on slide two for the draft network.
Okay. That's where we are now. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, I can't see your screen, so...
Okay, we're on the draft trail network recommendations.
Okay, great. So yeah, so this map shows our proposed trail network. So building off kind of the opportunities and constraints analysis that we just talked about, this network really proposes those improvements that we saw were really a need within the opportunities and constraints analysis. So the focus areas for these draft trail network recommendations are, of course, improving trail connections to schools. So like I mentioned, this was critical. We really wanted to see better improvements for bicycle facilities and trail facilities to our existing schools, closing the gaps in the bike and ped network, making improvements along and across major roadway corridors, improving connections to parks, of course, making those improvements to the proposed on-street bike network, and also, just as important, making improvements and proposing intersections improvements along roadway corridors. So just to explain the map briefly, the proposed trail facilities are in the dashed green, darker green, and then the proposed bicycle facilities, which we are proposing buffered bicycle lanes, which buffered bicycle lanes are your standard bike lane, which is five feet. And then it also has a foot and a half to two-foot buffer between the bicycle lane and the travel lane to give the bicyclists more space between, again, the motorists and their own bicycle lane. So we have buffered bicycle lanes in blue. And then our other bicycle facilities that we're proposing are bicycle boulevards. Now, this is a shared street accommodation with shared lane markings that really provides wayfinding, and it also includes traffic calming as well along these low-traffic neighborhood residential streets that usually have very low speed limits, low traffic volumes, so that bicyclists can already feel a little safe biking on-street with cars. But providing these accommodations, you know, like I said, with the markings, with signage, and with traffic calming measures, this creates a better sense of safety and comfort for bicyclists who are biking on the street. And then also with the signage, it also provides guidance for bicyclists who are either wanting to bike to, you know, the main corridors where there are bicycle lanes or biking to the trail and recreational network. So just to kind of, and then the yellow dots there show everywhere where we feel like we need intersection improvements. So that would be improved crosswalks. One thing that we did notice in Highland Village is that there are crosswalks, but almost none of those crosswalks are high-visibility crosswalks. So, you know, having those zebra striking with the high-visibility paint, you know, having your signage that alerts motorists that a pedestrian is crossing, having pedestrian signals, those are the type of enhancements that really can go a long way in making sure that as people are crossing those intersections, that they are visible and seen and they're safe. So just kind of, just to go over briefly some of these trail network recommendations, we have improved bicycle facilities along Highland Shores Boulevard. We also have, you know, all the trail network gaps. We have a trail along Village Parkway. This was really important because of, you know, being able to connect to the parks in the northern, western part of Highland Village and then also to the residential areas within the northwest that kind of feel from the survey and community input that we received, kind of feel a little cut off, at least, you know, being able to commute or reach destinations, you know, such as, you know, the schools within the southern and eastern and western part of Highland Village. People just currently do not feel safe with the existing facilities. So we've added side path trails along some of the roadway corridors, improved the bicycle facilities, and closed in a lot of those trail gaps where they are missing. Next slide? Oh, sorry, I was like waiting for it to change, sorry about that. So the next slide, and this is my last slide, focuses on the trail network priorities. So based on conversations with staff and through the focus group meetings and input that we received from the community, so many folks stress the importance to connectivity to schools. And so our priority corridors really focus in on safe routes to schools. So improving connections between schools and residential areas. Because already, like I mentioned before, you know, Highland Village has such an extensive trail network that's already existing. And so this is really closing the gaps. And so we really decided with our priorities to focus in on those areas that are most important in creating those safe routes to schools for students and parents. So the trail priorities, what we have, since we are also doing trail priorities and also made on-street bicycle facility improvements, we have five, our top five trail priorities and then our top five on-street bicycle facility priorities. And so I'll just quickly go through those. So trail priorities include the Barnett Boulevard Trail plus the District Trail Connector, the Briar Hill Boulevard Trail, the Highland Village Road Trail and Unity Park Connector, and then the Village Parkway Trail, and the City Trail and Highland Shores Boulevard Trail Connector. So that is a little corridor that essentially connects the Market Trail with the City Trail and then also connects to Highland Shores Boulevard as well. And then our on-street bicycle facility priorities are Selmair Lane buffered bike lanes, Highland Shores Boulevard buffered bike lanes, and then the Tartan Trail Bicycle Boulevard, Medina Drive Bicycle Boulevard, and Doubletree Drive Bicycle Boulevard. Does anyone have any questions about any of the trail network priorities or the draft trail network recommendations?
I have a quick question. So a few of those last three streets you just mentioned, Tartan Trail, Doubletree, and Medina are tight and full of traffic as it is. So how would we have a, I know those types of trails are going to overlap, but even just marking them, there's going to be cars parked over the markings for most of those areas.
Yeah, so shared lane, yeah, so shared lane, bicycle boulevards are meant for narrow neighborhood streets. And again, this is a shared street accommodation. And sorry, I should have included a slide that shows what a bicycle boulevard is, but that will include in the park. And I can of course, send any information that y'all would like. But these are shared lane markings that are within the travel lane that just really notes, okay, where the bicyclist is supposed to travel within the travel lane. And then also, it alerts motorists that bicyclists will use this corridor. So it really provides an on-street connection within residential areas to existing bicycle and trail facilities. So a standalone bicycle facility is not really needed, but something is needed there to provide some wayfinding and to alert motorists that bicyclists are using this corridor.
And Catherine, if you can hear me, those bike boulevards would also have signage that there would not be parking on that side of the road. So if people are used to parking on both sides, they would just be limited to park on one side. Is that correct?
Well, it does depend on, it does depend on the roadway width, but most of the time, you know, for bicycle boulevards, parking is allowed on both sides of the street because that also creates another level of traffic calming because it, again, narrows the travel width of the roadway corridor. And so cars will naturally slow down when there is parking on both sides of the street. And as long as the shared lane markings are marked within the center of each travel lane on either direction, that really ensures that bicyclists are traveling in the center of the roadway corridor, you know, on each travel lane. And so there won't really be any conflicts with, you know, getting doored or anything like that with parking on both sides of the streets.
Paul? Do what, I think she made a statement about limiting parking on, or he made, maybe you made it, limiting parking to one side of the street. We'd have to adopt an ordinance about that, wouldn't we?
Yeah, and we're not proposing that for the, you know, for the bicycle boulevard.
Right.
Yeah, but you're right. If that were to be done, you'd have to adopt an ordinance to do that and put proper signage up.
Part of the city is already covered by, the HOA prohibits on-street parking in Highland Shores. It's not administered, okay? But technically, you're not supposed to have on-street parking permanent, okay? Parties and stuff, you can do it. So I think it's something we do need to look at overall from a public safety.
But the three streets that I had questions with are all outside of the HOA. And one in particular, Tartan, is, there's no way. I mean, everybody's driveway is not very large, so there's cars on the streets in front of almost every home on both sides. So I just don't know how you could do a bike lane in there.
I think when...
Yeah, and, yeah, again, this is not a dedicated, this like bicycle lane, a bicycle boulevard is a shared lane marking within the travel lane. It's more of like for wayfinding and to alert motorists that bicyclists are traveling within the corridor. There were several, you know, neighborhood corridors that we did want to add bicycle lanes to, but we did notice both in our in-person site visit and then in our desktop analysis that because of the presence of parking and lack of, you know, in some neighborhoods, lack of driveways, we realized that we really could not propose bicycle lanes along those corridors because we knew that it would be a very difficult move, you know, politically as well, to prohibit parking along some corridors in order to accommodate bicycle facilities. And we are proposing in our policy recommendations to reduce the speed limit of several residential streets. There are several corridors within Highland Village within residential neighborhoods that are 35 miles per hour. And we really recommend at the highest speed for these residential neighborhoods would be 25 miles per hour to really be able to make sure that it's safe for bicyclists and pedestrians.
Just to be clear, there's only one street where it's 35 miles an hour, and then there's another, then 407 and 2499 are texted roads. But Highland Village Road is the only street where it's 35 miles an hour. Everything else is 30.
Right.
Yeah, and sorry, I misspoke on that. Even 30, 30, anything over 25 miles per hour and you, there's a crash, you know, pedestrian crash or bicyclist crash with a motorist really increases the severity of potential injury. So, you know, 15 miles per hour, of course, is ideal to limit some of those impacts, but, you know, reasonably 25 miles per hour is going to be the highest speed limit that you'd want along residential neighborhoods.
So with that, Catherine and Rachel, I want to thank both of y'all. I know it's an hour later in North Carolina, so I'm going to let y'all go, but thank you so much for your presentation and all of your research. So thank you.
Thank you all. And if there are any additional questions, please let Ron and Eric know and we'll be sure to get back with you.
Thanks, everyone.
Everyone, have a good night.
Uh huh, thank y'all. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ashton, who is going to take us through the opportunity area plans.
My name is Ashton Miller. I'm a land planner with McAdams. I've been with McAdams for two and a half years. Do you have the clicker, Ron?
It's on the...
Oh, I've been with McAdams for two and a half years, and before that, I was with the city of Frisco as a city planner. So I've got a little bit of experience both on private and public side of things. So tonight, just to discuss what we have, what work we've completed with the opportunity areas, just want to give you a brief overview. So we've done an inventory and analysis, so we've gone to each one of the different opportunity areas and done site visits. We've done GIS analysis and mapping, site inventory, sustainability analysis. We have had 11 different meetings with the property owners and property representatives of the opportunity areas. And our economic consultant, Catalyst, have performed a draft of the market assessment. And so we're going over to vision and goals. We've identified different goals that each of the different property owners have for their property or the property that they represent. We have developed concept plans, which I will go over in this presentation. And we are striving for the highest and best uses based on the market conditions, just because, you know, there's only 70 acres left in Highland Village to develop. So in order to put the city in a healthy financial situation, we want to recommend the highest and best land uses for the city. And then education of relationship of sales and property tax. And then we're going to go to our recommendations, preferred concept plan scenarios, which I would love for this conversation throughout my presentation. If you have any comments or anything that comes to mind, just feel free, raise your hand, and it can really just be an open dialogue. We're going to, through Catalyst, we'll do cost estimates of each scenario, land use and zoning amendments, we'll go on to that later in the presentation, comprehensive plan updates, and fiscal impacts to the city. And then implementation, so when we come back before you, implementation, strategies and roles, an overlay district, identify possible developer partnerships. So like I said, we've had owner, stakeholder, staff meetings. We did the community engagement during the February ice storm. We've had 11 property owner meetings, and we've had one design charrette with the staff leadership team. And so far, the materials that we've completed are a sustainability or SWOT analysis, community engagement. We've collected our community engagement results from the February meeting. We've gone and I will present the concept scenarios. And then on each of these slides, there will be the fiscal impact associated with each of the different concept plans. And if you'll remember, the first time we had the presentation, to go over just the comprehensive plan in general, we identified these six different areas as the opportunity areas. Since that meeting in January, there have been applications made on some of the properties that we identified, so we removed those. And what you'll see tonight is the, this updated list of opportunity areas. So to go into number one, we, oh, sorry. So we've got two different options, and I would like to receive feedback, you know, which one would you prefer tonight so that we can fine-tooth those plans and make them ready to be adopted into the comprehensive plan? So in the top-left corner, I've got the results of the community engagement meeting. We asked residents to vote and give their preferred land use option that they would like to see developed on the property. So number one, we've got entertainment, and then the second use was single-family and then a mixed-use type of development restaurants.
This is the Bishop property, right?
It is.
Yes, sorry, let me go back. This is what we're calling the Northern Gateway Opportunity Area 1. So as you're coming from Corinth, from Denton, along 2499, traveling south, anybody that's coming into Highland Village, this is going to be one of the first properties that they see. So we think it's a really unique opportunity to do something special when it develops. One of the property constraints with this is infrastructure. So in order to extend sewer, it's roughly $6 million. So in meeting with the property owner, he recognizes that in order to develop this property, it's going to have to be a use that can justify spending $6 million to extend sewer over the bridge along 2499 across Lake Lewisfield to serve this property.
Is there potential to help with that cost? Is there potential for a tip or a ture?
Is there potential for a TIF or a TERZ?
To my understanding, there is. To my understanding, there is. There's numerous ways in which, to pay for public infrastructure through a TERZ and private-public partnerships, things like that. So to go over what this, what you're seeing, we have, on the eastern side of 2499, on the right-hand side of 2499, we've got townhomes along the southern property. What we really wanted to do to protect the residents that are there is provide more of a buffer from their homes, from their backyards where they live, and do more passive, quieter uses into more intense uses. So you'll see, we've got townhomes, and that is 59 townhomes. Those are 25 by 110 size lots. And then, the red one, if everybody can see. These are the 59 townhomes that are here, that is served by, they're front-entry townhomes, so there's no alley. There's a 50-foot buffer that would be, we would maintain the trees along here, a 50-foot right-of-way, another row of trees, and then what could be trails or trees in here to serve as another buffer. And so again, I mentioned, you know, the intensity of the uses in order to justify the cost for, for public improvements. So one thing we heard from staff and from the property owner as well, is what this is, is these are two condo towers that are 10 stories. These would be for sale. These would have parking garages, a pool on the roof, similar to what is, what has been built over at Lakeside and Flower Mound. That's the same floor, this same footprint, size of building. And like I said, these would be for sale. And again, to create this entertainment-type of district that the residents can see being built on this property, you've got to have people living there, activating it, creating that 18-hour district. One thing you'll see as well are connection points along 2499. So those will be spaced out per text dot standards. I believe it's 425 feet. You've got your typical retail restaurant, build-to-suit type of businesses being built along 2499. This backside here are sit-down, full-service restaurants, another full-service restaurant up here to the north. And then where we get more into the entertainment-type of use is this brown building here. We'd have surface-level parking as well as podium parking, and then on top of that, we're proposing a food hall. So that would be this, this floor plan, I think it's two stories, three stories, and on top of a podium structure park. And one thing that's really cool with this property is your adjacency to Lake Lewisville. So we think that this could be something that is a huge drawer of all types of people. And so I said, this one's about 33,000 square feet for kind of reference legacy over in Plano's 55,000 square feet. So just a little bit smaller than, than Legacy in Plano. And then we've got, and we're doing like patio seating out here so that they could enjoy food, enjoy a drink, and they could look out onto Lake Lewisville. But the important thing is to get that height so that you have that view amenity of Lake Lewisville. And then here would be maybe like a, really could be anything, a restaurant, some sort of entertainment venue, like even a Marty B's or, you know, something where you've got an outdoor stage, and they've, they can, they can be right adjacent to the lake. And then along here, we've got more townhomes on the west side of 2499, and that one is 46 townhomes on the west side.
How many, how many acres on the west side does those 46 townhomes take up?
I believe that that is, I believe that that is two and a half acres on the west side. Let me see if I have that in my notes. I do not. I believe it's two and a half acres on the west side of 2499.
Okay.
And then here, this is, this information in the chart is from Jason Claunch and his team with Catalyst. So based on this scenario, option one for opportunity one, we've got all the building square footage is listed, the number of units, the new sales tax that would be generated based on their models, $483,000 per year. And this is, this is, all of these numbers are just related to Highland Village. This doesn't include any kind of money that would go to the ISD, any kind of money that would go to the county. So this is all 100% Highland Village. New property tax, just under $600,000 jobs. This will create just under 400 jobs and new residents living in this area, 448.
I've got a question for you.
Yes.
Could we designate that as a revitalization area?
Do you know anything about that?
What are we, what is being revitalized?
Well, there's nothing there now.
Right, that's one of the challenges of the site, too, is locations.
So you're revitalizing wasted property to an entertainment lifestyle, I mean, just a question.
Yeah, we can certainly, I think a TIF district might be a little more suitable, the revitalization area. There are so many qualifications for that. I just, yeah, I just don't think we could meet the qualifications for that.
Yeah, TIF or a TERZ, which is the reinvestment program. One of the challenges of the site is, is mid-block. How do you get people to come here or develop here with the cost of the infrastructure that Ashton pointed out and those challenges? And this is, I mean, this is a different plan than we're used to seeing in Highland Village, there's no question, but we wanted to put some, put this together to show its potential of what could be utilized here in order to balance the infrastructure needs and the cost of developing to create this mixed-use destination. Otherwise, people are just driving by and just not paying any attention.
You would have to, like, oh, sorry. Hang on. I think she, you, oh, yes.
And, well, that's, that's been the problem for years, is getting a developer here, but if you create a TIF or a TERZ, then that's the incentive. And that's the help with...
Why ask?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's a good, that's a good partnership with cities that have projects, and the county can participate in that, too. So like, that's, multiple groups are participating, and multiple groups are benefiting from that increment that's being, you know, after it's developed, that increment that's gained over that period of time, whether it's 30 or 40 years. It is, it is an out-of-the-box way of addressing that.
Just finding the developer.
And also, working with the...
Ron, Ron, real quick, council members, I see some of you aren't wearing your microphones, but you're probably going to want to say something, so you might want to just go ahead and hook up, so you don't forget.
This also reflects the landowners' wishes, and they've already done some preliminary work on something very similar to this, as far as attracting developers and investors. So it does reflect their wishes and values that we listen to as we, as we met with them. So the, the location of it, the activation through residential and making it really a destination, because there's quite a bit of population to the north and to the south, and there's nothing like this in, in that particular area.
All right, just a quick question, this is kind of uninformed sounding, but how do we go about finding somebody to do that?
One of the slides that Ashton talked about from Catalyst was finding, helping bring in development partners. When we've worked on other projects similar to this, then there's different developers or whatever that we can contact that would be interested, and then put them in contact with the city.
Got you. Thanks, Ron. Any other questions on this one? Okay. The second option for opportunity area two would be something that is done per the existing zoning. So right now, the existing zoning on this property is single-family 40, requiring a minimum of 40,000 square foot lots. So we've got approximately 23 homes on, on this option, meeting the, meeting the standards of the city, your standard 50-foot right-of-way. And you can see just the, a little bit of the differences in the economic impacts that this would provide from a sales tax perspective, new property tax, the jobs and residents. And then on the west side, what you can see is a little bit of an extreme land use scenario where showing how, how much commercial, commercial type of buildings can fit on this property. And one of the positive things about the adjacency is, is you've got Copper Canyon, you know, there's not really any kind of setback requirement along jurisdictional lines, and so you can sit those back a little bit to the west. Yes, sir.
Understanding that the asking for that property up there is close to a half million an acre, by the time you put the infrastructure in it, what is your landed cost for a lot for 23 homes or 23 lots? It's got to be close to $1 million a lot.
It would be a lot, yeah.
Just for the, just for the land.
You couldn't, if you're doing single-family, that doesn't, we could not use a TIF or a TERZ for the infrastructure, to defer the infrastructure.
Of course, if you look at something like that, the, the return to build that TERZ up, because when you do a TERZ, which is a tax incrementary investment zone, when you form it, the, the base is what the value is of that property at that point. And then over time, the incremental increase, be it through assessed value or new properties, that builds up that increase. So, yeah, something like that would, would really just give you...
Well, but you'd still have to have, you'd have to build a home at $4 million to amortize the lot. Okay? At a four to one on a building for the, for the lot. So...
You're having lots that big, and let's pretend that the retail's never going to go anywhere, you wouldn't necessarily need, we already got a new water line going, you wouldn't necessarily need a sewer line, because it would be, on lots that big, you would septic, just like the rest of them are, so...
Yes. Yeah, you could do septic.
And I understand...
You've still got a half million an acre to buy it.
Well, but if it's not worth, I mean, if there's no sewer, it's not worth anything. So, you know, there's, there's an issue there on that price.
Okay.
I think the price point is too.
It's just an idea. That's all it is.
So, as I stated early on, one of our goals tonight, as we move through these, and Ashton has done an excellent job explaining what could go in there today with the zoning, and then what could go in. One of our goals is highest and best uses for each piece of property. And yet, we're only going to have one concept in the final report.
And one thing to keep in mind, too, that I'd like to say, is there's no guarantees that it is going to develop this way based on what you recommend tonight. I mean, somebody's going to have to come in, they're going to have to work with staff, they're going to have to meet all of the city ordinances, propose a plan development, and you're going to, both P&amp;Z and council, you know, this will be back before you. These are just recommendations based on the information that you have today, as well as what the goal of this comprehensive plan, as we're planning out the rest of the 70 acres of the city. So I just want to, just want to say that, too.
I understand that.
Why can't you run a sewer where you can? But you just crossed a couple bridges.
Can I, for, I'll just do a raise of hand for preferences. Raise of hand of number one, or we've got number two. So number one?
Not prepared to say one way or the other.
Yeah, that is, that is a good idea.
And, and one thing, too, you know, hearing questions, and these are going to be refined as well even more into, these are very down and dirty sketches and, and renderings of what this will look like. So the, the deliverable, and the last thing that you'll see will be a very presentable, nice-looking plan. These are just really to get colors and building location and things. Sure.
Was there any analysis done with regards to the increase in cost of services to be able to support these developments and compare that to the...
That will come. That, that is part of what Catalyst is working on, cost of services of these, of these different scenarios. What, what we wanted to do was have our preferred option for each one, and then he can run it one time for cost of service.
Let me, let me ask, I'm sorry, something, Ron, a hypothetical, your area where you have the Class A Towers.
Yes, sir.
What if that was a no-go? What's an alternative there?
I mean, for example, I played around with it a little bit, and, you know, you could do more townhomes, you could put more restaurants. And, I mean, I heard whenever I was here in February, a large demand for more sit-down restaurants, more places to eat in Highland Village. So that could easily be something that, that is recommended. And with all of these in the ordinance, there will be narratives that we write for this. And, and one of those, you know, one of the things could be, these types of land uses are recommended for this property in order to increase the new sales tax in Highland Village, property tax, bringing jobs into Highland Village, things like that.
And, and Dan, on your question, we, to, to move from Class 1 to Class 2, I mean, we could do something like Tower Bay, where it's a four-story wrap in order to get some density.
I think that was a response to 10 stories.
And, and the other thing would be, with that height, you know, that would absolutely necessitate some new equipment for the fire department.
Right.
And what Flower Mound did on their first, first building over five was, there was an assessment, a, an additional assessment in order to help defray the additional cost to, to the fire department. So there are some creative...
So the assessment is what paid for the ladder truck?
Mm-hmm.
Did it, did that also include the cost of manning the ladder truck?
No, it, they, they, at that point, because they knew they would be getting some tax dollars, it was, on that particular instance, it was the, the cost of the ladder truck to serve that particular building. And of course, now, after Lakeside came in, they were prepared already.
Right.
What school district? What school district?
This is LISD.
Is it LISD?
Yes, sir.
So they funnel into Marcus?
Or more than likely.
Okay. What elementary school would that funnel into?
Probably Heritage.
Okay.
Was part of the study, was traffic included in the study?
Traffic has not been assessed, however, do you know that there are plans to increase the number of lanes on 2499 inwards? So I would anticipate, you know, if, if something like this were to go in tomorrow, that if there, there were TIA done, that, that would be one of the recommendations is to, is for an increase in, to do that expansion sooner rather than later to support this.
Aren't we, aren't we something like 15,000 cars a day away from that maximum use?
Is that about 15,000 cars capacity still on 2499, roughly?
Yeah, we're like two-thirds there.
Yeah. This would not, this would not trigger that.
Yes, sir, Sean.
A quick question, was there any analysis done on either impacts or benefits to other retail areas such as the shops or Market Street with something like this?
Like, in, in the current market analysis that Jason did, I don't believe that there was with this developing. That could be, that can be something that I ask him, though, with these, yes.
I'll be more beneficial.
I know you were getting ready to ask for a show of hands. I'll show a hand. Of the two concepts, I like this concept. Don't like the high-rise, but I like the idea of being able to get out of city dollars spent in our city, okay? And I like having some alternative housing that is not uber-high density along that buffer corridor, okay? So we're going to have people coming in, stopping. I mean, me, I could see, you know, I'd vote all day long to have a papacitas up there, or a papadoes. So, no, I, I think that meets the requirements that we have, and I think it, it shows that property tax and sales tax, I mean, it's a good, good return on that property. I think single-family... good, good return on that property. I think single-family, I think that's just gonna be too expensive to do that.
Okay.
So, I would lean that way.
The, the towers, again, trying to balance all the different things, the towers is something that the landowner had already been pursuing and looking at. But we did, we were easily able to fit Tower Bay, if you're, you know, right across I-35. We were easily able to fit Tower Bay-
Yep.
-in this, which I don't know what the number of residents, but it would give us a lower foot-
Tower Bay is what, four stories?
Yeah, it's about 100.
Five stories, 300, 300 units. So, with a two or 1.9 population, I don't know what that makes it be. But it's, yeah, it's five stories with a six level with views, and it's wrapped around a parking structure and some sub-level parking.
Well, we're not gonna work all of this tonight. You're looking for a concept.
Right.
I mean, you've got one person that likes the concept. I don't like to have to add another fire engine, ladder truck and staff. Okay? So, that's gonna be always a challenge. Assessments, I don't like that word.
This is something, too, a comprehensive plan is a guide for five, 10, 15 years down the road before you may go through this process again.
Yeah, no, this-
John, I'm with you. I like this concept way better than I do the single-family.
Right.
Okay, we got two. Let me have everybody else.
Well, let me just say something, just to be clear. As you said, this is a 15-year planning document.
Yes, sir.
This is not gonna happen tomorrow, right? But this is a best and best use of this property from a city standpoint, not necessarily a resident standpoint on some level, right? So, you know, anybody that wants to come into the Bishop property and develop single-family can do it any day they want, right? There's nothing stopping them. But it's not necessarily in the city's best interest if that happens, if we can get something that's, you know, more tax dollars to the city and more property value to the city, right? It only helps the city. So, I mean, I'll agree with John and Tom. I mean, for a long-term vision, this is what I would prefer over 24 housing lots, right? So, but, but it's not gonna happen today. So, I'm not necessarily gonna beat this dead horse.
And I think it's a great way to look at it. This is the, what would be the best case. It is very long-term. If you get down the road, 20 years from now, nothing's happening. Maybe the land prices are different. Maybe it becomes single-family. But, but in the meantime, I think looking at something like this, it is the best case. I, I do think it's important, and a little bit to Sean's point about how it would impact other, other shopping areas. In an area like this, I think it is important to have residents there. So, you've got a built-in base there. You've got the, you've got the live-play aspect of that.
Well, it will ultimately take away from some of the walk, the foot traffic in the shops. Because if you provide restaurants, you provide an entertainment venue, I mean, that's the whole purpose of one of these types of districts is live, eat and play. And so, it's, it's gonna affect. But at the same time, you gotta look at it from a visionary standpoint and determine what's best for, you know, residents, what's best for the city, and what's better, best for the future.
Well, and I think that was a great point, that we can task Catalyst to look at the impact that it would have in the area. And I know we've opened it up to lots of questions, and we don't wanna cut it off. We do have six, five more of these, plus we have three other of the comp plan to cover. If, but again-
I think it was important to have this discussion.
It's y'all's time. We're here to serve you. But what'd you say, Dan?
I was just gonna say, I think it was important to discuss this, though, because this is a, an area that's, that's both an opportunity and a challenge for the city.
And this is probably one of the most intense ones that you will see. So, starting off heavy with the first one.
This is also one that has got the most, the fewest limitations other than some of the sewer infrastructure.
That's right.
Okay, because you're not impacting a lot. I mean, I know it's on the west side of those townhomes. I know it's on the east side, there's nothing impacting on the north side. On the south side, you've got one residential street, and you're doing a good buffer on that. So, it's, it's got the, the most openness. Some of the others can be real tight on what you could possibly do without having impacts. So.
And the proximity to the lake and the amazing views-
Yeah.
-that will help sell it itself. If the, if through this plan, if it empowers that thinking and people see the vision and that the city's open to it, then I think that would help facilitate the movement ahead.
Yeah.
The upper left-hand corner, is that the alignment to our village, our vision?
The graph?
The bars on the left-hand side, the graphic?
Yes, that is, those are the results of the community engagement event, as well as the feedback that we received online.
So, the top one that has the, the largest number by a huge margin, is, what does it say, entertainment?
Entertainment is 83, and then single-family was 33.
Okay.
So, there's no bar for multifamily, but we're proposing two 10-story towers?
The, the mixed use would be 34, or 14.
So, multifamily is included in mixed use?
Yes.
Okay.
In the option two, what was on the west side of 2499?
Those, those are more like the retail that you see on the east side. That's now retail on the west side. So, those would be built-to-suit. Those average at about 6,000 square feet per building. Probably, they've got a 70-foot depth in the, in the building width. So, it's just a built-to-suit type of strip retail that you see. But again, it can really configure any way within the size constraints. So, here more favoritism towards the first, the first one. Okay. So, moving on with Opportunity Area 2. So, what you're looking at on the screen, where the first picture that you see, that is the vacant field just north of Torchy's Tacos and the, and the shops of Highland Village. So, that is currently entitled for a business of some sort to go in there. So, this is just a representation. There's no, there's no voting, or there's no option preferences for this one. We just wanted to show for this opportunity how, how it could develop. So, we've got a 2,200-square-foot coffee shop with a patio on the north side. We wanted to avoid them spilling out onto the entrance into the shops, and so we wrapped around the drive-through around the building so that they utilize the parking lot, and they utilize the existing parking that is there today. And we don't break up the trail system as you're entering into the site. And then the southern picture, the, the bottom picture is a retail restaurant, built-to-suit type of user, could be a restaurant. But this is, again, also entitled today with the marketplace zoning, and a patio is in the back. But this is just behind Walmart. So, again, this is an example to show you how parking can be configured and how a building could sit on that lot as well. Then you see here on, on Jason's numbers, the new sales tax from a coffee shop or a retail restaurant combined, about 33,000 new dollars to the city Highland Village, a new property tax, just under $7,000, 27 jobs created, no new residents with these as their commercial uses. So, do I have, are there any questions on this one?
Just real quick, when you were looking at this, was there any research done as to why that patch of grass has never been developed to date?
The, the utilities are there. There's, there's numerous utilities that serve the shops right now. I think, I, I don't think it's very obvious that it is developable. I mean, I don't know that they're marketing that.
Okay.
The, the shop's ownership, I don't know that they're necessarily marketing it to be developed. So, I think it's just, it's just always maintained, just being an, an open lot in the corner. Any other questions? Okay, easy one. No, no voting on this one.
Sorry, let me go back. There are other empty spaces in that existing parking lot. I think as you get further north, I would say, or even just north of this coffee shop, I mean, there could potentially be a pad site carved out of the parking lot there. Is there any thought given to, I guess maybe it's not entitled per the plat. Is that what you're saying? Just the coffee shop is the only-
The existing entitlements on that piece of property is, it shows a parking lot.
Okay.
So, any type of amendments to that plan development would require P&amp;Z and City Council to vote on it. So, no, today is just a parking lot, and that's what the concept plan shows on that property. Now, the coffee shop, that is something that is being shown on the, on the approved zoning today.
Thank you.
And just like the HTO thing that has come before y'all over the past year, that was a replat, and it was the realization of parking is, is a changing demographic, and that some of the old requirements for parking may not, may no longer be necessary. So, to your point, that could happen, but we have not really looked at any redevelopment, maybe in Opportunity 6, but we really haven't looked at redevelopment, but what is undeveloped.
Okay. And then, sorry, just follow-up. There were no discussions with the property owner as part of this process on any of those items?
We did discuss with the, with the property owner. And, and it was more of a informational type of thing, is what we're doing with the comprehensive plan. And it related to Ron's plans with the 407 corridor, what the Opportunity Area plans are, and just things that we would, we would be looking at with, throughout this process.
Okay. Thank you.
So, moving on to Opportunity Area 3. So, just for reference, this is Barnett and 407. This is just north of the Whataburger, connects into, is on the north side of Main Street that connects into the district. So, what we are showing here are just under 12,000 square feet of office space. We've got three buildings and the associated parking that would serve these buildings. And again, one thing we heard from the residents, and speak of Highland Village, is 78 voted on an office type of user. And this could really be configured any way within those, in those lot constraints. And the next, the next vote was for restaurant, and just under that was retail. We felt that office would be more appropriate just because of the visibility of this lot. It would be hard to see, it would be hard to see this from 407 as you're going westbound. And so, we thought more of a quieter, passive type of use that doesn't require a lot of visibility like an office does. And then, for the new property tax, 12,940. And then, across these three buildings, 94 new jobs created.
I will tell you one thing about this area. That concept would go perfect there. Here's why. You drive up 407, just into Copper Canyon where that little retail strip is, there's a hot works, there's a, okay, right behind that, they're doing this. And those buildings are already occupied. And they've already been financed.
And P&amp;Z will be seeing an application for this very soon.
Yeah, good.
Alzheimer's.
Yeah, that should go very well.
Across the street from that?
All right, I'm done.
So, okay, again, this one, no, or no voting, or hands raised on this one. So, it's easy.
And my just mention, too, the vacant tracks on the east side of Barnett are, are zoned in that area, which I believe is called multi, multi-use. So, there's, there would be no zoning requirement for it, but it would require site plan approval.
Gotcha.
So, to move on to Opportunity Area 4, this is the, the triangle piece. The adjacencies are, we've got single-family on the north side, east side railroad tracks. The highest-ranked land use was, single-family was 74. So, this one is, is really interesting because there are three different tracks within this property with three different property owners that all have three different goals for, for this property. So, it is, it's a challenge. However, this landy, or this concept plan that Randy laid out is what is permitted by Rite today. So, this is just one scenario. Streets could be configured slightly different, you know, but this is our best stab. And one thing that's important with this one, with the three different property owners, there would be a phased approach that would be required in order to develop this. So, from the, the back portion here, this was the property owner that they would be okay selling and developing their property sooner rather than later. The, this property here, this property owner that owns the north part, they wouldn't really want to sell, but they are getting, they are getting older, and they see that one day they could. And then, the property owner for the south part, he wants to die on the property. I mean, he loves the property. He'll never get rid of it. You know, he, he's got no motivation to, to move off of his property at all. So, we took that information from the property owners, and what this would be is a phased approach. So, there'd be the first access point here, which would come down. It would probably stop here, and it would go into a series of cul-de-sacs. And there would be an emergency access-only, which this property owner said that he would be okay with an emergency access-only connection point. So, they would, emergency access connect into here. So, you've got your two points of access, and they could develop these lots. And then, from there, once you got, once you have Phase 2, which would be, which, you know, you could get as far as you could, there may be an emergency turn or a, a street here that gets you some frontage for these. But this would be Phase 2, and then, more than likely, it would stop somewhere around here, around here. And then, whenever this third property is ready to develop right around here, then you could connect into those streets and loop it, as well as connect, make this connection here. So, I have to get a little bit creative with this one, but this is, this is what is permitted by Rite. And you've got 54 lots with this one, new property tax, $148,000, 160 residents with Option 1. And then, for Option 2, we went with a denser product of patio homes. So, these would be 40-by-1 tens. So, this would be a way to get more residents into Highland Village. I mean, you've got 219 residents proposed with this concept plan. And again, going at it at a, at a phased approach, as well as incorporating, there's already a pond on this property, so using that air, that area as a pond, as well as open space and, and more detention area here in the northeast corner. And everything drains to the northeast area. So, this is, this is another option, something that's denser, has more of a payoff for current property owners and, and whoever develops, you know, that obviously they would get a higher return with doing a product like this. Yes, sir, John?
Option 1 is SFA.
That's SF-15.
It's actually SF-12. So, we have SF, what, to the north is a 15, and then SF-8 to the, I went in the middle and did SF-12.
Yeah, that's right. Sorry.
What's all the, the neighboring homes around there, probably SF-15 or?
To the north, they are. To the, to the east, they're 8.
Okay, okay.
The developers, though, the developers I've talked to, go back to number one. Number one, with that piece over there in the corner, is not gonna work unless you have number one and number two together. Because number one, it costs them too much to develop. They can't do the, the stubs and do a lot of the infrastructure for number two. And also, SF-12s, SF-15s won't work. You need to be SF-60s, you need to be 60s in there for it to work. So, until the cat down in the bottom corner decides to die and leave, and that guy who owns the north corner decides to sell, that's gonna sit there forever. Because you're not gonna have a developer that touches that, that, that piece over there to the left.
Yeah.
It's just not gonna happen.
And Scott can confirm this. I know over the last 15, maybe plus years, there's been multiple ones that have come in, and without any change of SF classification, believe most of them have withdrawn because they could not make the, the money work. Scott, how, were there, have there been three or four over the last 15 years?
Actually, you've had, you've had two since I've been on council, because I knew them both.
Which one did you have, four since I've been here?
Yeah, yeah.
What is the optimal density, then?
60s. I can tell you right now, the optimal is 60s. That's what makes it work. And you gotta have at least two of the three tracks. I understand you've done your- I understand you've done your research, but I've got guys that have come to me and laid it out. The price point for the whole property, at least two years ago, was almost a million seven. And that's not the whole property, that's just one and two, which is a little, little bit tough. And then, the ingress and egress, I like where you've shown them, that's kind of where my guys showed it, but...
Those are using the existing stubs today.
Yeah. Yeah, there needs to be little, the plans that I've seen have a different look to it. But until you get one and two together, it's not going to happen.
So you're saying SF-60, 60-foot wide lots, 120 feet deep, 100 feet deep? Okay.
That's what my guys tell me. I mean, that gets you, that gets you the density, and that gets you the price point in there that's conducive to the, to the surrounding neighborhoods. Those, that's not going to work.
No.
Not going to work at all.
And that's why in option two, we went to 40 by?
110.
110.
Option two won't work.
That's too dense?
Too dense.
Every neighbor within 50 feet would be up in arms, pouring that much traffic into those current existing streets.
And then, based on what, what they're going to be able, let's assume they get one and, the tracks one and two, the price point of the house for that small, too small, so small of a lot, would have to be so ridiculous that it's just not going to sell. And it won't fit within the neighborhood. So, it won't be attractive.
As we move ahead, I'm trying to digest this, because we're just going to show one option. You know, maybe we go with a 60, 120 that's halfway between one and two, and just move ahead. And as Paul said, and we've all said, you know, this is just forecasting, shooting, and we'll have to see what the market allows.
Yeah, I can tell you, the market's not going to do anything until you get one and two together. That's it. You get one and two together, and then you convince a guy down on the south end to sell you, sell me, let's say I'm the developer, the adjacent seven or eight acres that he doesn't use, that he just sits on, and just leave his little house, then you could even make it better. But until that happens, it's going to sit there.
So, we can definitely go back through and, and it would be, there wouldn't be 95 lots. I would think that we probably would lose 10 lots or so, or any?
Yeah, we'd have to run the numbers.
Yeah, but...
Might end up with four units.
I knew, I know a guy that he, his firm did a proposal on this, and I think they, the highest they could go was 78.
Okay. We can definitely make that change, okay?
Yeah, and the gentleman who wants to live out his, the rest of his days here, his house is like right on the north, his north property line. So it'd be nice if it was down south, but it's right in the middle, so having to work around that's pretty tough.
Well, he has a nice piece of property that adjoins, that he doesn't touch, but he doesn't want to lose that, so...
As, as early as 10 years ago, that was still an active farm. He was actually utilizing every piece of his property.
Yeah. And the other thing that you haven't really addressed is, see, that's a railroad track.
Yes, sir.
And there is no cover on that track, and it's an elevated track. And so, those lots that you're going to put down there on the southern end and, and section one and whatever, I mean, those, yeah, you're going to have, you're going to have a hard time giving those away.
Yeah, that's a good point of providing more buffering against the tracks, yeah.
Landscape buffer, okay.
Anyway, moving on, moving on.
So Opportunity Area Five. This one is the only tract in Highland Village, or for the Opportunity Areas, that has adjacency and visibility to 35W. So, we met with this property owner and, you know, the pie was the sky. Sorry, Malora, I'm getting some feedback. Should I move somewhere? Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. So, met with this property owner and his, what he wanted to do was high-rise condo towers on, on this site. And, you know, throughout this process, we, you know, want to involve the property owners, we want to hear what their visions are for their property. And we also, the reason why we do community engagement events is because we want to listen to the residents and take their opinions and their, their thoughts into account. And so, the highest, the highest voted on land use was entertainment with 70 votes, the next one was single-family, 32, and then hotel was the, was 24 votes. So, one thing, what we're proposing on here is a hotel, a 20,000 square foot floor plate, and it would be what you're seeing built in the market today, a four-story or a five-story hotel. And then, from there, going north, a dog park, and utilizing the open space as we transition into the Copper's Branch Trail System. And the important thing with this one to remember is, with a higher building, a taller building on here, there's opportunities for signage, and there's really opportunities to capture that highway traffic traveling along 35 and bring them into Highland Village. So that is, that's one thing that we wanted to propose with this, as well as with this type of land use being shown on Opportunity Five, you can introduce hotel tax. So you can see that that figure there is just north, or sorry, it's just south of a quarter of a million dollars per year for a hotel occupancy tax. From Jason, we hear that that is estimated around 7% hotel occupancy tax that can be captured. So, in an effort to propose the highest and best land use and show you something that, that could be proposed and that could work on this site, we've got a hotel here. So do, are there any questions or thoughts or concerns?
He's proposed the 37 townhomes, two or three different iterations, I think, and they've all pretty much been kicked back.
Hotel won't work there.
Now, one thing that we're showing here...
There's nothing that draws you there, there's no real amenities other than the lake, and you're not going to get a flag to put a flag there. It's not going to happen.
So one thing to take into account too, from what we've, what we have heard, just thinking globally, we've got adjacency to the rail station. We've got the connection being made with Highland Village Road that is going to go under 35.
Go north.
So there will be higher access to Highland Village Road going northbound, and then I think one day coming southbound and connecting into under 35. So connectivity will improve at some point in the future, so thinking long-term, as well as there's conversations going on with Lewisville and the Core, and the golf course, as well as redevelopment of Lewisville's Lake District into more of an entertainment district, from conversations we've heard and things we've heard. So, this could be a way, based on adjacency in different jurisdictions, to capture people that are visiting those types of things and having them stay in Highland Village.
I'm, I'm not a hotel fan, but I, I think that there's not a quality hotel within miles, either down in Flower Mound by the Riverwalk, or all the way down in Lewisville at 121. There's hotels, but there's not quality. And when people have folks in town or whatever that require more than just one bedroom, there's a, I believe there is a need for a quality hotel in the area, whether it's us or whether it's across the freeway. But I mean, there is a need, because the ones that are there...
Well, one thing that he said though, and, and, guys, I'm a banker, so I got developers and hotel guys that I talk to all the time. My hotel guys, and you said one thing that hurt my ear, is there's got to be something that draws them to it, draws people to it, not just an overnight stay. So when you look at the Marriott and Riverwalk, okay, they built the Marriott because there's going to be the Riverwalk. And if you look where hotels, hotels, not your Motel 6 or Econolodge or Bell, there's something that drives. So if there's an entertainment venue, I think I heard you mention that, that Lewisville or somebody is proposing over in that area, that there's an attraction, then that's a possibility. But as it sits right now, the ingress and egress is terrible. To get into that property is terrible. Where that property is located for a, the demographics to work and the feasibility to work for a hotel is just, it's just not...
Not right on the freeway.
Just a couple of comments, I think, you know, north and south, egress and access is going to be better, okay? The development that Lewisville is doing south from 407 north on that whole property is mixed use, entertainment, office.
Next month.
Okay, so there's going to be a huge amount of...
Monkey guy is going to go there.
Addition right there. So, you know, we don't know whether someone could go, but I definitely think we could use a hotel, not, not a monster one, but I think we could use one, and I think with, with the access, because again, going north, there's, there's nothing until you get to Denton, and we get a lot of business people coming in and through here, so...
The other part of it is to the south, and where the TOD is, there's a potential for, if that, if anything ever happens, there's potential restaurant development there too, which feeds off the hotel.
Wasn't there one time, weren't they talking under the TOD, a hotel there?
It's, it's been mentioned, it's been brought up.
But to the future with the entertainment?
Well, that's, I mean, that's already, I mean, they've got all of the building permits stacking up on that billboard, so I don't know when they're breaking ground, but it's soon.
There, you mentioned, and also there were Sneaky Pete's, they're doing a whole master plan for that entire area as well.
Just right across.
Yeah, there will be some entertainment areas there for sure.
If you have something to draw on, then they'll come, but...
Is there an opportunity then for us to rethink this one, as well as the Northwestern, creating the high-rise as a combination hotel and residence? There is entertainment, there's restaurants, there's a draw, there's a hotel for the town. And then looking at this one as another opportunity for either townhomes or smaller single-family to buffer the residents just to the west of Copper's Branch Court, limiting the impact to them, but also providing something in that space.
If I'm understanding correctly, it would be on the north side, would be a relocated, would be the relocated hotel site? Or the hotel would be scooted closer to...
No, I'm saying, take the, the footprint of a hotel and combine it with the high-rise on the Northwestern side of the town.
On the township property.
And your option, and your first opportunity area.
Put a hotel there.
Put the hotel there in combination with residence.
I see.
And then redeveloping this as another use. That's more conducive to the neighborhood.
The trouble, the trouble with, with any kind of single-family or the townhomes, the biggest drawback was the price point that, that the property owner would have to get to make townhomes or single-family work. You can't, there's not a buyer because of the, the highway noise.
But he hasn't made them work as single-family either.
Right.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, is what he's, what he's proposed and his price point, nobody's going to want to live next, is going to deal with the highway.
Right. But you do have a good buffer now that you have, you do have an expanded freeway, but you have the Copper's Branch Park feed in front of, as a good buffer. So you have some type of visual amenity that's more pleasing. A four or five-story hotel against the residence, I think is going to be a real hard sell.
Very right about the highway noise. I went out there and just parked one day, and it's amazing how loud it is. It's, it's, that's a, that's a huge challenge for that piece, particularly for any type of residential.
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. Is this a combination hotel-townhomes here, where the 37, are there 37 townhomes on this site plan as well?
Or is that just the alternative?
That is what you'll see on the south side.
Sorry, can you go back to the south side? Sorry, I just wanted to see that.
Yeah, so the, the south side, just to hit on, this is south of Highland Village Road. There's a lot of constraints on this property, one being the flow adjustment, 537 flow adjustment with Lake Lewisville, and the, and the spillway as well, as well as flood plain. So we met with this property owner, and he was, seemed as though he was very motivated to do a product like this, which would be townhomes 25 by 110s. Then the end caps would be 35 feet wide, or 35-foot wide lots. These would be rear entry, so you've got alleys that serve each one of the townhomes. We'd have to add in some guest parking within this development and a couple of different areas, I see places where we could do that. So this is, this is that 37 townhomes, Sean, that he's, that he saw on the chart.
And that's been proposed two or three times, just in the five or six years I've been on council, and the, the neighbors to the west, and I think some of them are sitting behind me, they wanted to grab their pitchforks and muskets.
Well, he's not our client, it's a property owner that we were, we wanted to meet with to hear their opinion, just like we met with all of the residents of Highland Village.
In 2016, you made the, you made the exact presentation for the property owner in 2016 under TOD.
It was a 60-something units, and they were a lot smaller. And we walked away from that relationship with that client, we didn't want to move forward with it anymore. So we did reach out to him as an effort, like we reached out to all the other property owners and the other Opportunity Areas, and this is the input we received. It's more, these, these townhomes are a lot larger than what we were proposing before.
And when we were talking with him, again, highest and best use, from our market analysis, it would be higher use than the residential. But he would like to do something that would be able to move along more quickly. And so, talking with him, it was this particular product, wasn't our first choice as looking at highest and best and tax use, but we did want to listen to him and his sensitivity to working on the property for five, six, seven years, and wanting to be able to move ahead.
What was your, what was, what were, you said it wasn't your first choice for highest and best use, what was?
Who, who asked?
Okay, sorry, Dan, go ahead.
The highest, or the most voted on use was an entertainment type of use, so...
That was resident feedback?
Resident feedback.
Was that consistent with what y'all saw as well?
It could go both ways. I mean, we could do, we could do an entertainment type of use. However, with the size, with the, with the constraints of the property, you know, it gets into where you've got parking lots and you've got buildings that become very close to those existing residents that are there. So this is an effort to show something that is a quieter use, like single-family. They can, they can still be feasible with, you know, a 30-foot landscape buffer with trees along that Western property line, like we have shown. So it, it gets into, you know, the parking, the building footprint that would be required for an entertainment type of use, everything, everything like that for...
That's actually, and that's actually two or three separate parcels of land, isn't it?
It is.
And so, what you're showing there, and that's, that's just one of the property owners, that's not showing, that's not depicting?
It's two, that's both of them.
So they're both of the same mind?
Mm-hmm. We talked to both of them. And he, there was a good point, without height and because of the sound wall and the elevated freeway, that, and we've already mentioned, it's, you know, this site has very poor visibility, but yet, so to, to do something more in the entertainment on this particular one, there's really not, it was brought out through our conversations with Catalyst and the owner, you know, there, there wasn't very much visibility.
And we had discussions with Text Dot about potential for signage as well, and it would, it would have to be something where there's an elevated sign on the property, because Text Dot really only allows their green or blue signage, you know, that hangs over from the, the sound walls or up on the big rafters that you see. So, getting any kind of particular signage that's just specific for this site would be, be very hard with Text Dot.
What did the survey say on the top?
The survey, sorry that that's hard to read. It's, it's entertainment is 70, single-family is 32, hotel 24, restaurant 22.
I mean, it's a little surprising, because entertainment can be a lot noisier than townhomes.
What exactly is, and for the, for these purposes, what exactly does entertainment mean? mean?
Entertainment is something where it's more of a destination type of use, like a Marty B's, where you've got.
Does that mean restaurant and, and, okay.
Yes. Yeah, Chicken Pickle.
Yeah. I mean, there's a reason these are the last remaining properties, is because they're so hard to deal with.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Can you go back to the north side real quick?
Yes, sir.
I think this is about three different owners. I know a majority of it is owned by a single owner. Have all three owners agreed? I'm assuming maybe so, just because of location.
It's actually all one owner. He still owns all the lots, and he rents out that one house that's there, that's in the middle of the.
Okay, because you got Pylon Homes Lodge, and then you got the one owner at the very end, so he owns those companies as well, so all.
It's all, it's all Ramon, yeah.
Yep.
Would this put an end to him selling cars?
I know.
What is the, the, does the, what appears to be a trail system.
It's already there.
On the north side, that goes to the park?
That goes to Copper's Branch.
It does connect to the park.
Yes.
Is this an opportunity then for us to look at some type of low-level, single-story retail to support the park?
It definitely could. I mean, this, you know.
But what is the viability of that? Retail is going to be the real issue.
I think so, too. Yeah, I'm not sure if they have the.
The support.
The support for.
You can't get signage, you can't get people off. You're going to rely on local traffic as well as park traffic only.
Yeah.
That's a hard sell.
It's going to be a long walk, too.
I think that would be really interesting. It would be, I think, welcomed by many. I think it would require the city to think out of the box on how to make that happen, and incentivize developers to come in to be able to do that. And maybe this is another kind of location where a TERS would make sense, or something like that, to be able, to be able, because, you know, the challenge is, he's going to hang on to this for as long as possible. And so how do you get someone to develop here in a tasteful way that represents the goals of our community, and it's sensitive to the neighbors? And I think really, it's the, the city's going to have to really direct that, and this plan should help with that. So, you know, this hotel that we're showing, we're also thinking of a boutique hotel, like a wedding venue type thing, but, but then those aren't too financially, I guess, beneficial as far as being able to come in and buy him out with all of his six, seven, eight lots or whatever. And so just, you know, what we're showing here could be, could represent something like that. But this is not to say that in five years, something like a Chicken Pickle, or, you know, I'm using that as an example, but a use that we can't, we don't conceive right now, come into Highland Village and want to go into one of these places, because they'll go through the zoning change and process and everything. So these recommendations wouldn't preclude that from happening. And, you know, in fact, we kind of hope that those things do happen, so there can be this destination, entertainment and retail, like a hula hut, you know, on the south side. I've always kind of thought that would be kind of cool to play off the water there, but the Corps of Engineers doesn't think so. But that would be, you know, just a kind of a neat location for that type of use, given all the characteristics of the area, but it's got to take incentives, it's got to take out-of-the-box thinking, what else can, what other tools can we use? And just, there's, there's uses out there we haven't really conceived yet, but just trying to, how do we tap into that entertainment if that was the most desirable out of all the residents?
Fall over.
And we're not taking that off the list. I mean, that could still happen, but we want to paint the picture of something realistic and provide recommendations, but those uses could come in the future.
And I applaud you for doing that, because this is, this is good creative stuff. I mean, it's out-of-the-box thinking, and I think we could take kind of a combination of some of these things and make it a viable solution to, you know, maximize opportunities. So I applaud you for the thinking. I'm not really a grump.
So let's move on. Last one. And I'll go through these ones. These are relatively simple compared to the, the previous five. So with Opportunity Area Six is the one location in Lu, in, sorry, in Highland Village. As you're coming from Lewisville, this is, this is really the first development that you see coming into your city. So we've got, on the left side, we've got the Goody Goody and Wells Fargo and 407 Salons, Domino's Pizza within that shopping center. And then on the east side of Selmaire, have the 407 Club, and then the, the more strip retail karate place that you, that you see, that you see there. And we know that there have been numerous uses, you know, throughout the years, even City Hall was on the, the Wright Building at one point. And what we wanted to do was dress up both of these areas. And we met with both of the property representatives that manage these properties. And the east side of Selmaire, we talked to her a little bit about what we were looking to do after meeting with staff and the residents, and use up some of that parking where there's the existing drive-through that was previously used, and turn some of that parking that is generally vacant most, most part of the day, and propose a restaurant. So we've got a 3,200-square-foot restaurant there that sits on open space. And what you'll see later on during Ron's presentation of the 407 corridor is, is this location, let me use the pointer. This location was the highest voted-on area for a 407 amenity, being in this location. And I'm assuming it's, you know, it's the gateway into 407, anybody that, or sorry, the gateway into Highland Village. So anybody coming in from Lewisville, you know, it really shows them that, that they've really planned out and, and thought about these areas that they're making special along this corridor.
What, when you say 3,200-square-foot restaurant, give me some brand names that fit that size model.
Maybe like Hillside, Hillside?
Okay. Well, Hillside's kind of a, that's a one-off, but I mean, in terms of like Chili's, Applebee's, are they about the same square footage?
Both of those, both of those. Yes, sir.
Okay. Does this include dressing up, you know, in terms of, you know, like on Highland Village Road, as you come in, we have the monument sign that says, "Welcome to Highland Village," or something like that? Is that including that? Because that's always been my thing, is, is this area, it's an ugly, it's an ugly view.
The one that, there's the one that's in, in front of Wells Fargo right now, the smaller one, but it definitely, if, if council wants to do something that, that dresses up the entry feature into Highland Village, this would be an appropriate location.
Okay.
For that.
Excuse me, let me interject if I can. Is this an opportunity then, and it may go to Paul, is this an opportunity on both sides of Selmaire to create a reinvestment zone?
Or redevelopment authority, is something I was thinking of.
I think that's worth looking at there. You know, the property owner, particularly on the east side of Selmaire, at least the manager, they were very excited about the concept and the opportunities. You know, they've got some steady tenants in there. They've got a few vacancies, but they've got some good tenants. But I, I think they would be open to looking at something like that. And we do have to look at those, every opportunity that's possible.
Well, I think it's a, I think it's important for us to look at the possibility of redesigning in some form or fashion to dress it up for the appeal, refurbish it, revive it, bring in new, new eyes, and possibly new tenants, and, and get in, get in the, the empty spaces.
On the west side, is Henry S. Miller still own that?
No, I believe the owner's name is who we met with, he may just be the project rep, or the, the property rep, but his name was Ahmad, I believe. Was it Ahmad or was it?
Where the, where the Goody Goody is, I wouldn't know where that Miller had sold that yet. They were trying to, they were trying to lease it up and sell it at one point.
He said he had bought it a year ago.
Okay, then Miller sold it.
Mm-hmm.
There's only one vacant space there.
Yes, and, and the west side of Selmaire is, they've got very strong and steady tenants that are there. Obviously, you know, the Goody Goody liquor is very busy, and certain times of the year, as well as, you know, Friday night, it's, it's always busy.
Every day.
I grew up in this area. I, I know this area very well, and pretty much came to Highland Village throughout my entire life. So I, you know.
When you were a monitor, you bought your beer there.
Well, you know, I, we drove past it all the time.
But the one thing. You might want to stop while you're ahead.
I'll, I'll stop right there. But one thing that we noticed is, and I think most of us noticed is, is how harsh of a site that this is. There's very minimal landscaping, you know, stark white building.
And the tenants, my understanding, and this goes back to, I think, I think the Levitt days, the tenants, the, the owners have never really had an interest or an incentive to update their buildings.
And that was really the feedback that we got. He said, you know, I'm, everything's good. You know, we're good. And what you can see is the reconfiguration of the parking lot, which is, you know, today it's, it's a little bit awkward. It's not historic, you know, or how we typically lay out parking lots today, so did something to provide landscaping opportunities. But Mayor, you're absolutely right. I mean, they, they really just want to keep, you know, their businesses there.
Which is why I think Brian mentioned the reinvestment, and I mentioned the redevelopment authority, because maybe it creates a good partnership with them.
Well, here's your only challenge on the west side, is that where the Goody Goody is, that's a long-term lease?
Mm-hmm.
And it pays, the last time I saw it, it was like 23, 24 bucks triple nets, which is good for that location. Henry S. Miller had no desire to do anything to spruce it up. The tenants in there are all long-term locked-in leases. And why invest a capex unless there's something that we're going to give them? They didn't sense it to do so.
Well, that's, that's the part of it, is back in the, the older days, there wasn't, there wasn't a, a desire on the city's part to do that with business partners.
Yeah, it looks the same the day that Food Lion opened.
But if we give them, the question on that one would be, if we give them something, what are we going to get back? And I don't think it's going to change your tenant mix or do anything to change the parking lot, because to your point, I mean, we all know that Goody Goody is packed. Now, on the east side, I think you have more of a potential, because that strip center used to be open, owned by a guy out of California, who all he cared about was keeping the doors open. So I don't know who owns it now. But putting something on that corner, and Paul, you and I have talked about that, be it a restaurant or some type of office, you, you may be better considering an office building, because I'm not sure that you're going to drive traffic there for a restaurant, as opposed to going in and out of the shops and having multiple choices, but just something to think about.
Yeah, then you point to the west side, it's, it's a cash cow.
It's a cash cow. That's all it is.
So may, the only opportunity maybe with the FM 407 corridor is to dress that up from a landscaping standpoint. So the entry point to the city looks, looks better and a little softer than what it is now.
And if we dress it up with landscaping, maybe it makes the shopping center less visible, and maybe they have an incentive now to make it look prettier.
Well, but. But I think we also have an incentive to put something like a restaurant in this corner. There's really nothing there on the east side of town.
That's correct.
For anyone. And I think, I think a restaurant or something similar would thrive in that location, supporting that side of town.
Well, and also.
Isn't that, that new layout?
If you make it harder for somebody to see what's in there.
I can't tell. Is that, is that that green piece on the right?
Yeah, there's that big square right there.
Well, and to Dan's point about dressing it up, I mean, come on, when you come into Highland Village, that's the first thing you see. And it's kind of ugly.
It's embarrassing.
So, no other way to say it. But if you dress it up with some nice landscape, and we incentivize them a little bit to do so, that's a little bit more pleasing.
We also discussed with them the potential for like facade improvements, as to how the buildings look as well. And again, it's kind of the same feedback on east side of Selmaire, that would be something that they would be willing to look into.
Really?
West side, you know, not so much.
Yeah, west side, he's, they're not going to, it's a cash cow. He's not going to touch that. East side, I'm glad to hear there's some receptability to that, because used to that guy, just all he cared about was getting tenants in there and clipping coupons.
So those are, those are the opportunity areas. Again, no options on this one. This is what we are deeming the redevelopment site, redevelopment opportunity area. So to kind of summarize everything from a money standpoint, if we pick the highest and, and most intense uses on the ones where there were options, and as well as ones where there weren't options, these are the new sales tax, new property tax, having the hotel, new jobs and new residents for Highland Village, as well as the lowest. So you can just see the difference in those estimates there with, with the different uses. Yes, sir?
The four acres on Barnett, was that not an opportunity zone?
That was during the, during this process, because that was under review. That particular property was removed from, oops, sorry, Lori. That particular property was removed from our analysis because of its pending in. And, and I know where it is right now with the current plans, but it's my understanding that that particular thing's not dead, dead. So we'll, anyway, that's.
Did you have an opinion, though, his proposal notwithstanding?
Ashton and I talked about that today, and it would be whatever the existing zoning was.
Single family.
Would be.
I think it's right now, it's zoned, single family.
Oh, that one is zoned?
It's SF 40 right now.
So, I mean, I would think what's right across the street with offices and everything that that would make sense there, as far as being able to sell the property.
Okay. Because I think the realtor, the realtor that's representing one side, I can't remember if it's a seller or if it's the developer, originally in her documentation, best use, I think, was medical office at one time, and then she's changed it now.
So, you know, I'm, I'm not going to make any.
Just curious.
Particular comments, but if that had never come in, and we were to have done it, we would have probably done it just like we did the other lot with garden office or something.
Okay.
Good job.
I know we're go, we're going late. Do we have any other questions before we get to Thoroughfare?
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, real quick, to be respectful at once, time I helped, we had much more to go.
No, that.
Yeah, let's plow through.
Yeah, this was definitely the longest section.
We will.
Does anybody, does anyone want to take a recess to go to potty real fast? Let's do, let's do five minutes.
Okay, that's a good.
Let's do five minutes.
I'll say.
Beating.
Well. And. We. We have a proposal into Denton County to study the entire Denton County future land used for all the cities, and of course, that includes us, all the cities, transportation, all the emergency services. So, we're hoping that we will get that contract, and that will help us see regionally how we as Highland Village fit in to what the future land uses are for the whole county. At this point, I'm going to switch to the other mic.
Yeah, you guys over here are miking up.
This is the opportunity, oh, sorry, this is the Village Connection presentation. And as you recall, originally, that was the 407 corridor. We rebranded that, and I'm going to take you through where we are on that right now. And then the final presentation, one slide on ordinance and review, particularly suggestions. So, the first one, inventory analysis, that's finished, vision and goals. We're in the middle of recommendations, and recommendations is really the final plan. And then, not just the plan, but how to implement that. And the plan will be a, originally, it was a five- and 10-year plan, and based on some information that we've discovered, we have expanded that to include a 20-year plan also And, sorry, had to maybe kill a sapling for the paper, but I did want to give you all. Ashton, would you hand this up?
I was asking you.
Oh, did you ask me?
He was walking up wanting to help.
I was not paying attention. There might be some that aren't staple. Oh, that's it. We've done extensive studies. We actually flew the entire length of 407 with our LiDAR drone. And so, with that, we have every half inch of information, up and down, building heights, just everything that we would need, because there's so much going on in this corridor. Now, it will, once it goes to construction drawings, it will be a lot more important, but we still wanted to do that for where we are now. And really, the final step, under next steps, is just finalizing the conceptual plans. And three of the main things from public engagement is how do or would residents use the trail? And then, trail amenity areas and trail amenity options. And number one was walking, jogging, and running, and then bicycle, electric motor-assisted, bicycler scooter, and skateboard scooters and rollerblades. And for council, we, last week, we talked more extensively about golf carts. And when we started the public engagement and looking at a lot of options, we weren't as focused on golf carts as once we got into the project and talking with council and people. So I do have some additional data for you on the 20-year plan, from what I presented last Tuesday. And the area number six, which is the Selma entry, that was rated number one for where they felt like there should be some kind of amenity. And then, area five, in front of Painted Tree was next. Area four, it's interesting, it's going east to west, was third, and on towards the west.
Area four is.
I'm sorry. Yeah, area four, area five is Painted Tree, area four is right behind Seven Mile.
Okay.
And then, area three is the corner of the formerly known as Chase Bank. And then, area two is in front of the Bowery, formerly known as the District. And then, area one was a underutilized parking area in front of the Walmart Center. And, well, let me go back. So now, let's look at the document that you have in front of you. It's the five-year plan? Did you have an extra one, Ashton?
Yeah.
Okay. On the. That's part of evaluation to see if there's some improvements or what kind of changes might need to take place in those certain intersections to make them safer and have less accidents, incidents happening on them. And then the 2019 traffic data collected to determine the approximate traffic volume and percentage increases that are potentially going to happen in major points within the community. And then, another big thing is that link analysis is being performed on the current levels of service on all the major thoroughfares to see if the thoroughfares as they're designed and done right now are meeting the level of service or hanging on the traffic volume that's happening on them. So the remainder of the work that they still, that they're still working on and we're pushing to get finished up, that will be included in the rest of the documents, is the developing the future improvements and recommendations based off of the data analysis. And then they'll develop a new thoroughfare master plan, which is, you probably all know, has all, basically like the trail system master plan will show all the major thoroughfares on it and any updates to those thoroughfare types on the previous master plans that would have been done. And that's about it?
Any questions?
Any questions?
Does your plan include an analysis of how we get out of DCTA?
No, but they could probably make a recommendation towards that.
Man, do it, baby, do it.
Well, and, we-
Thanks.
We have a proposal into Denton County to study the entire Denton County future land used for all the cities and, of course, that includes us, all the cities, transportation, all the emergency services. So, we're hoping that we will get that contract and that will help us see regionally how we as Highland Village fit in to what the future land uses are for the whole county. At this point, I'm going to switch to the other mic.
Yeah, you guys over here are miking up.
This is the opportunity, oh, sorry, this is the Village Connection presentation. And, as you recall, originally that was the 407 corridor. We rebranded that and I'm going to take you through where we are on that right now. And then the final presentation, one slide on ordinance and review, particularly suggestions. So, the, the first one, inventory analysis, that's finished, vision and goals. We're in the middle of recommendations and recommendations is really the final plan. And, and then, not just the plan, but how to implement that. And the plan will be a, originally it was a five and 10-year plan. And based on some information that we've discovered, we have expanded that to include a 20-year plan also for the connection. And, sorry, had to maybe kill a sapling for the paper, but I did want to give you all. Ashton, would you hand this up?
I was asking you.
Oh, did you ask me?
He was walking up wanting to help.
I was not paying attention.
That's fine.
Okay. There might be some that aren't staple. Oh, that's it. Thanks, sir. We've done extensive studies. We actually flew the entire length of 407 with our LiDAR drone. And so, with that, we have every half inch of information up and down, building heights, just everything that we would need because there's so much going on in this corridor. Now, it will, once it goes to construction drawings, it will be a lot more important, but we still wanted to do that for where we are now. And really, the, the final step under next steps is just finalizing the conceptual plans. And, three of the main things from public engagement is how do or would residents use the trail? And then, trail amenity areas and trail amenity options. And, number one was walking, jogging and running and then bicycle, electric motor assisted, bicycler scooter and skateboard scooters and roller blades. And for council, we, last week we talked more extensively about golf carts. And when we started the public engagement and looking at a lot of options, we weren't as focused on golf carts as once we got into the project and talking with council and people. So I do have some additional data for you on the 20-year plan from what I presented last Tuesday. And, the area number six, which is the Selmair entry, that was rated number one for where they felt like there should be some kind of amenity. And, and then area, area five, in front of Painted Tree was next. Area four, it's interesting, it's going east to west, was third and on towards the west.
Area four is...
I'm sorry, yeah, area four, area five is Painted Tree, area four is right behind Seven Mile.
Okay.
And then, area three is the corner of the formerly known as Chase Bank. And then area two is in front of the Bowery, formerly known as the District. And then area one was a underutilized parking area in front of the Walmart Center. And, well, let me go back. So now, let's look at the, the document that you have in front of you. It's the five-year plan? Did you have an extra one, Ashton?
Here.
Okay. On the, the five-year plan, and I'm going to just kind of fly through this, it's west to east, so it starts at Chin Chapel. And you can see in the legend, I know it's small, but the, the blue dash lines are existing eight-foot trail, green is existing six-foot, orange is existing five, and yellow is existing four. And we do have a little mess up on the deal, on the chart. There's a few little areas where there's a three-foot sidewalk. And if we start in front of Buffalo Wild Wings, we've got the eight-foot. And where the dash lines are are not including any improvements within the five-year plan. And we can keep going down to the main entry into the shops, and then in front of Whole Foods. So really, because all of the shops has an eight-foot, there's not any in the five-year plan, plans to increase that width. And same as everything in front of Marketplace, all the way from the corner down to the toasted Now, we start getting into some improvements. There's a little cow path where the wide yellow line is on area number seven, and we would like to make that connection. Next, there's a four-foot sidewalk in front of Tartan Village, and at this point, we would leave that. Going east in front of Tartan Square, there's not any sidewalk there. And we had numerous discussions with staff and different input. And we finally ended up with wherever we need a new sidewalk from Highland Village Road to Chin Chapel, then we're going to put that in at eight. And so the yellow represents new eight-foot sidewalk. It stops in front of Water Burger. Not sure why Water Burger, we didn't make them put in a sidewalk because they came in. Oh, well, it was Long John Silver's before that.
Captain D's.
Captain D's, yeah.
Can't even remember that.
So, maybe when Captain D's went in, we didn't require it. And then all in front of the Montana, Bowery Park will be eight-foot, continuing on to Briar Hill. Once we cross Briar Hill in front of Dat Koo, up to Dental Depot. Now, in front of Dental Depot and Chicken Express, mistake on my part, that should be a wide yellow line. So that little section was left out. And then in front of Owlsley, I don't know if it was Hugo's or the one boat, no, it was the one before Hugo's where we had them add the, the narrow sidewalk in front of what is now Lost Colony. And then we would restart the new trail going east through Highland Forest where Walgreens is, on in front of, I think it's Goodyear, and then behind Seven Mile. And one of our biggest challenge areas along the entire length is, you see on area number 15, the driveway where you go into Seven Mile, and you can see how close that parking is on the east side. That's the tightest spot along the entire, but for now, we can get an eight-foot trail in there with some retaining walls and some regrading.
Excuse me, Ron, for just a minute.
Yes.
And this would go for the entire length that we've, you've provided thus far? What, what were the constraints and how close does this walk, walk this path? How close is it to 407? What is the distance between 407 and the...
We want to maintain TechDOT's minimum two-foot clearance between edge of sidewalk and back of curb.
Foot is the minimum, is there, that's their requirement?
That's the minimum. Their preferred is four.
And how many locations along here are at that two-foot?
Well-
Forty of them?
Definitely right here and then in front of the salons of, is that the salons of 407? What, no, that's the other one. Anyway, you know which one I'm talking about, by the animal hospital. That one is really tight, but I think we can still get four. Now, I'm about to say something that can be controversial, and that's, to get this in, there will be some needed re-landscaping, meaning some trees are going to have to come out to make this happen. Those can be replaced. Some of them are probably so large that it's not feasible to get a spade and transplant them. Some of them could be transplanted, but the, in front of the salons is our next real pinch point.
So, in that area and the area in front of, or just past Seven Mile Cafe, seem to be your tightest parts. The other locations, it appears, based on these drawings-
Right.
-the path could be pushed further beyond a two-foot minimum.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Giving the opportunity for safety-
Right.
-between the roadway and the pavement.
We, we would only go down to the minimum if, in order to avoid any redevelopment on the adjacent property. And, the, the corner of, at Seven Mile, I mean, we are right at the two-foot and we are literally on the edge of their parking.
Well, my biggest concern, and I've experienced this on 2499, is the, as the path becomes more adjacent to the roadway, it becomes a natural safety issue, right?
Definitely.
You've got automobiles that are traveling between 40 and 50 miles per hour and you've got a two-foot distance between those. If you're headed west, that's to your back. You won't see what's coming. So I'm concerned about the safety issues on the, on the path. And if there's any way we can incorporate some type of buffer issue, whether it's landscaping or trees, something-
Right.
-to, to help, that I think would be beneficial.
Well, because we have that flown data from our drone, the biggest concern is right there-
At the Seven Mile?
Yeah, at Seven Mile. And, you know, maybe at that point, we have a section of six-foot. Because once we move to the east side of Highland Village Road, we've collectively said, because of the lower density of commercial, from there to our Lewisville proper, city limits, we're going to go in initially with six. Our ultimate goal is 12 for the whole multimodal village connection. But, we have to do it in phases. And this represents what we would like to accomplish in the first five years. But, I like what you said, Brian, and I'll talk with staff, but on that particular area, for us to go down to six for 40 feet would increase the safety but decrease the width, but that might be a very valid trade-off.
At this location, but what is that going to do to the requirements for multimodal?
For multimodal right here, that's in the 20-year plan because in the 10-year plan, we, we want to do as much 12 as we can, but we, we don't, we don't want any condemnation or whatever. So, for, for that, for the 20-year plan, it would require some redevelopment within those areas that are super, super tight.
And this does not at this point?
For five-year, it doesn't. And even in 10-year, where we want to get as much 12 as we can without having to either purchase or condemn any adjacent properties. And we're hoping within the 20, you know, that there will be redevelopment going on. And at that point, if there's redevelopment on a site, then we will fall back on our setback requirements for commercial, which is a 20-foot street yard. And then, we can do that, but we can't, everybody's grandfathered in right now until there's redevelopment.
But today, if you went to Seven Mile or the people, the Shellmans who owns that parking lot, I mean, look at the parking lot and say we need to buy 10 feet, which really wouldn't impact the parking lot much?
Right. I'm thinking if they were to lose four spots and they could put in two parallel spots-
I'm just looking at you, you kind of rotate them in. Anyway.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what the, on that particular one, I'm not sure what the, the current drive aisle is. It's, the parking lot gets really weird right there anyway.
But given the long-term goal, and if we're looking at multimodal, this is an opportunity for us to reduce the parking size along 407 to accommodate the multimodal vehicles. They require less space. Still accomplish the required parking spaces we need.
Right.
So, long-term, that's an opportunity for us.
So really-
Some areas that are easy to accommodate that. In fact, some of the property owners we spoke to, and they, they were fine if we get to that point to give us some type of an easement or something to add on to that. It's just that some of those pinch points are going to be much more tricky and probably would when a redevelopment occurs.
And that would be a longer-term goal for us.
Yeah, it definitely would be.
Some of these areas, I mean, most of it's flat, but some of these areas, like in front of Dental Depot and that point you're talking about at Seven Mile Cafe.
Oh, yeah.
There's a sizable elevation-
Right.
-between the, the street level and right where those parking spaces are, it's a pretty big hill. It's gotta be five or six feet at least, if not more.
Well, and same in front of the Bowery, you know, that really drops down. Now, when we designed that, I think we have like a 30-foot setback there, so there's plenty of space to weave and all of that. But, the, the further you get away from 407, the steeper it gets to, you know, go down into the, the shopping area there. And, another thing that we, I want to make you aware, and Paul alluded to it, is the city only has rights within the TechDOT right-of-way. And those rights are managed by, by TechDOT. And as we continue to widen, we're, it's going to mandate mutual access easements into the property because if we're putting a public sidewalk on private land, then we need an easement. And they would want to give it, if they want the sidewalk, they would want to give it because, once it's in a public easement, then they're free of any liability within that and it falls on the city's liability, like if two people crash their bikes into one another and somebody breaks an arm. But, overall, a lot of this is going to require some easements onto private properties to allow the public sidewalk or multimodal trail to go on to their property.
Then, moving on to one more step, if you don't mind, please. The, along 407, are there any utilities that we would have to be concerned with?
There's a ton of utilities along there. And of course, there's that huge Upper Trinity water line going from about more, well, right past Morris, keep going west. And there's just a multitude of, there's some underground electric, tons of communication stuff-
But this is-
-as well as the city's utilities.
But this is a sidewalk, are we going to, we'll be able to overlay those, possibly. We would not have to relocate them, which is the biggest concern.
Unless you got to grade around stuff or move stuff to get the sidewalk by there.
Right. There's a few utility boxes that may need to be moved in order to get our ultimate 12. I mean, there's plenty of space, but that thing is just right there. And if you go on one side, you got 10 feet, and if you go on the other side, you have four feet, and we need 12. So, but I didn't see any of the really humongous-
Major.
Right, transformers or whatever that we'd have to relocate.
Your big problem, to Mike's point, like in front of Dental Depot where those grades are, you're going to have to grade into that. And then as you move down in front of the Seven Mile Cafe and all that, those, I mean, you're going to have to grade into that. So you may bump into some of that.
Right.
Some of that, you may have some issue there.
And we've, we've located all of the public utilities through GIS, so we know where that is. It's the private utilities-
Brinklers and everything else.
You know, that aren't really-
But this plan going down that far is, how far out? Going down all the way to Seven Mile Cafe, how far out is that?
Five years.
Five years, okay.
Right. Everything on this set is five, and then I'm going to talk you through the 10 and the 20.
Okay.
So, we made it to Highland Village Road, and then at Highland Village Road is where we're going to switch to the six-foot because we had quite a few areas that eight-foot would be very difficult. And like I said, a little bit less commercial activity going on there. Now, ultimately, the six will go to a 12 and the eight will go to a 12. And, there's nothing in front of where, and I guess HTO is still moving ahead, HTO and then Handel's. Man, we need a 12-foot there, there's so many kids that, so many high school, every time I go, there's like 20 high school kids in there, which is great. And you keep going east in front of all of those. And we do have a little bit more setback until we get to the Highland Village ground-mounted tower on area number 19. And as we get in front of the RE/MAX building, of course, that building's been there forever in a day. And, that area is, is very, very, very tight. And, really to go anything beyond the six is going to, I believe is going to mean we have to go into, pass the curb line of their parking. And then we'll continue on east, and remember, the, the dash lines are where there are no sidewalks currently, down in front of Goody Goody. And then when we get to the, to Selmair and going east, we do have a four, no, five, five-foot sidewalk there, so we're not going to replace it. Now, when one of, and we talked, oh, Scott's not here, we talked to Scott about this, you know, there's that huge drainage issue right in front of that development. And that would either require a bridge or coming back in with a bunch of, connecting all those pipes together and then covering it. But, some of the stretches are going to be obviously more expensive than others. So, that takes us through the five-year plan, so every dash line is our expectation- So every dash line is our expectation to put in for the five-year. The 10-year plan is.
So they're all dash lines?
Well, the wider ones.
Yeah, so the wider ones is new.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everyone's clear on that.
Thanks. The wider ones. And the width of the wider ones are representative of the width of the sidewalk. So you might have noticed the blue one isn't quite as wide as the yellow line was. And then the 10-year plan would be to go wherever we can without redevelopment to have the multimodal. And of course, there's creative ways around that. Somebody mentioned, you know, purchasing 10 feet of the parking lot at Village Creek, which would mean they wouldn't have to redevelop the whole thing, but that trail could go in. RE/MAX, oh my gosh, we, Sonny, is Sonny still here?
No, she had to leave.
Sonny said, well, let's just turn part of their driveway into a bike lane. I mean, it can still be a driveway to serve eight parking spaces, but bring it into their property. If we didn't do that, then it would require redevelopment on their property. And then the 20-year plan is the full length that, whether it requires redevelopment or not, the full length would be the multimodal. And Ashton, if you can hand these out. We, in, as some of y'all may know, DCTA has started very preliminary studies of converting the rail line through Highland Village to a commuter rail. And with that, we know under current ownership with the rail lines, they will not allow a two-foot pathway in there. They won't allow anything at all within their rideaway. But if it goes to commuter rail, then that really opens up, you know, another multimodal trail east to west through Highland Village. And then I've also proposed, if that were to happen, at least from 407 up to the railway, there aren't, I don't think there's any absolute barrier. There might be one where on either the east or west side, we could put a multimodal along 2499, at least from their south. Once we get north of Highland Village Road, I mean Highland Shores Boulevard, there's quite a few areas that are so occluded, we could never get it due to their retaining walls or whatever. So that gives you a little bit more options beyond what our initial task was to study 407, but with the DCTA thing possibly happening. And those wheels turn very slow. That's why it's in the 20. So, any questions on 5, 10, or 20?
Yes, Sean.
A quick question with regards to having a multimodal trail next to the rail line. What is the spacing between the trail and the actual rail line? What would that be?
Oh, between the trail and?
And the actual line itself.
I don't remember what the rideaway is that the railway, railroad currently owns, but there would be quite a bit of separation. If you've ever ridden or whatever, the trail along the DCTA from Highland Village up to Denton, a lot of that is within the rideaway. And it really feels very comfortably separated from the railway.
Is the railway where it comes to Highland Village and crosses there at Briar Hill, is that where part of the intermodal will be? Is that on the inside of the tracks towards the houses? Or is that on the north side of the track?
We really haven't gotten that far, other than identifying that that rail easement could be an opportunity in the future.
And you're going to end up going on the north side?
Mm-hmm.
Why would that be?
Of the track?
Going back to the trail along 407.
Yeah.
When I look at this, at all points along the way from roughly Tartan East.
Okay.
Where your spacing is tighter. The way this is drawn, and it might just be from the schematic, that most of the path is up against 407 right along. But there's a lot of green space on the other side of the trees closer into the developments.
Right.
Just to show where a path would be, but not physically laid.
Right.
Okay, so there is an opportunity for us to go on the inside further where possible and get as far away from 407 as we can.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Because once we get outside of the Text Dot Rideaway, and this is going to be almost everywhere, then we might as well widen the easement as much as possible to move it. And again, this is a little bit schematic and.
That runs alongside.
Okay. You caught me. I had a little communication problem with one of the people working on this, and I got this at four o'clock today, and I'm going, that's not where it's supposed to be. But we will reexamine, this is not the final document.
But it's just an idea.
Right, it's showing where it's going. And we will, I appreciate you pointing that out, Brian. We will definitely take up as much of that green space away from 407 as we can.
Okay, thank you.
One more quick question with regards to the railway. Is this trail or multimodal along the rail only possible if Kansas City Southern no longer operates it or sells it to DCTA or somebody else?
Yes, there's no, okay, I'm being emphatic. I do not see any opportunity with the current ownership.
Yep.
And, you know, Scott's been here a long time, and he said, just to get them to do anything is, you know, three, five-year process. And working with other rail lines on other projects, there's just very little. And, I mean, they've got this huge, long history from the 1800s of being in control, and they love that control.
Yep.
Did that sale go through? Because they were selling, they were being purchased by Canadian Pacific, if I'm not mistaken.
You know, there were several legal hurdles I had to give you. I believe that it did. I'll confirm that.
Sean, to your earlier question, just scaling off of these plans, the rideaway's at least 100 feet. So, if not more than that, wide for the railroad.
Yep. And.
Plenty of green space on either side of that for the trail.
Paul, you can clarify this. My understanding, if DART does come in, that it's, it was going to be a shared line?
Honestly, I don't know. I think that's going to be part of the studies to how that would work.
Okay.
And where you would have to have points to get off and things like that.
Whenever I used to work for DART, I mean, 90% of their stuff was all their own thing, and they just took over rail lines. Part of the line between Dallas and Fort Worth was shared. I think it didn't go well, and then DART kicked, or DART totally took over that.
The line.
I think it's a diesel line between Dallas and Fort Worth.
Yeah.
Trinity Rail.
Well, that kind of brings y'all up to date on where we are. At the beginning, I showed, we still owe council a meeting where when we will aggregate all of our recommendations, and then we'll bring those to y'all to see if you want additional ones or remove some. And then the last time I'll see y'all is hopefully in October, when a vote is called and everybody says, says yes for adoption of the final product. We owe the staff one more meeting, and we're not going to meet for the final draft. We'll give them the final draft, and they'll do an internal review on that. So we're right at the end of all of our meetings, and we still have some work to do, and we'll jump at it. Yes, Sean?
You had mentioned one final slide with regards to ordinances.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I hate to, it sounds fascinating.
Ashton, why don't you go over this?
You want? Just one last, one more.
Thanks a lot.
There's always somebody in every meeting that's got one last thing.
Sorry, guys.
It's only been three and a half hours.
Okay, so this one should be pretty short. The ordinance review update, just to provide everybody with where we are on that one. We've got the development-related documents that are in effect with the city today. So we've got the comprehensive plan that has previously been adopted and will be revised with this plan, which includes a future land use plan. We've got the zoning ordinance, which has a marketplace overlay, a non-residential overlay, and a TOD overlay. And lastly, we have the subdivision ordinance. So we have been tasked with studying those city documents and making recommendations on things that can be done to improve, improve those documents. So.
I want to just clarify.
Improve or?
As it relates to what we're doing, we're not doing a complete ordinance review, but based on what we've been tasked to do, what do we think should be looked at in the ordinances to facilitate either the opportunity area plans or the 407 village connection?
Right, thank you. Thank you. So what the anticipated recommendations are that you'll see, and the first one is make all documents that regulate development readily available. It's a little bit hard and a little bit confusing to find, you know, for a property owner or somebody looking to develop a property. You know, what are, what are the existing constraints? What documents regulate my property? So that would be one. Number two is update the future land use plan to align with the opportunity area recommendations. So that will, that will be something that kind of goes in with the last one, but it's something to promote these, just like the meetings we're having today, whenever an application comes through for something on the, one of the opportunity areas, you already know that you've got your future land use plan is in line with, you know, what may be already supported on that property. And then the last thing we noticed in the marketplace, or one of the things we noticed in the marketplace overlay was there's a trails plan within that overlay. And we would like to see that the Trails Master Plan that Catherine presented on, you know, it would, anything would revert to that plan, as opposed to being in a different overlay with potentially different standards, and that could be conflicting with how, you know, it connects into 407. And then another thing is update the online zoning map to show all of the overlay districts that are associated with those, with any property. Again, just for ease of anybody wanting to develop within the opportunity areas or within, along the 407 corridor, that they could see, they could see their overlays that apply to them. And then lastly, going into the future land use plan, we think that it would be beneficial for city staff resources, for ease of decision-making for P&amp;Z and city council. If there was some sort of expedited path of review for any development that occurs within an opportunity area that is what has been adopted through this comprehensive plan. So, you know, for opportunity area number three, where there were the three office buildings, if they're proposing three office buildings or an office use, they can go through some sort of, which we've got to iron out these kind of details and these kind of recommendations. But it would be something where, you know, they go through an expedited review, and it makes y'all's lives a little bit easier from the decision-makers' responsibilities, because you know it aligns with the future land use plan, and, you know, it's what was decided upon through this comp plan process. So those are, those are the five anticipated recommendations as of right now. And this process is still going on, so there'll be, there may be more to come with the ordinance updates. And with that, that is everything, I believe. Any kind of questions, lingering thoughts? Sorry, we ran late.
Mayor?
Can we, can we just review this overall schedule again on when we expect to get the draft report? Any review period that we're going to have, and then when we may foresee adoption?
Yeah.
Because I guess, sorry, I'm curious how much time we'll actually have to review the draft document before we vote on it.
Well, and I was going to kind of address that point. What the schedule is, is that we would get you a draft on September 27th, looking for adoption in October. I would think after going through tonight, the park plan, the trail plan, there may not be as many questions or comments about that. The opportunity areas, that is going to be more difficult. I know we'd like to get it done by October, but if that takes some time to review that, have some further discussion, I think we need to make sure we do that and do it right. And I will say too, the mayor had asked me about making sure we get you all copies of the presentation, so we'll get that to you. And then if there are any comments in the meantime, if you can get those to me, and we can incorporate that and then have a follow-up meeting, maybe by the time we give you guys a draft. Thank you.
Send PD up.
No, we're going to print them out.
Oh, sure.
Print them out and have PD drop them off on your door.
Hard to manage.
Is there, do you, is there going to be another opportunity? I mean, I know this was broadcast live tonight, public input on what we're looking at. Is that something we just, we build space for in a council meeting?
You know, we could do it that way. We could do it online.
After, sorry. Working with Lori, we have not updated the website with any new information. Our desire was to present this to y'all first, you know, before we present it to the public. But following this, we can send Lori some updated documents. And I hear what you're saying, Mayor, and people are always free to input. We're not looking at, you know, saying, for, how do I say this?
You're not looking for another?
We're not looking for a whole lot of input, because we're, we're getting close to the finish line. But we want to definitely be informationally proactive in putting out where we are now. Now, I'm not the one that makes that decision on, you know, if there's some more input. If somebody comes through council or through staff and it's warranted, then we will certainly And so it depends on how that information comes in, and we will listen, because we're here to serve the council by working with the staff.
Okay.
Just a comment. I think we need as the council and as the P&amp;Z to look at it, that we're not going to be voting.
And we will listen, because we're here to serve the council by working with the staff.
Okay.
Just comment. I think we need, as the council and as the P&amp;Z to look at it, that we're not going to be voting on the rezoning. We're not going to be voting on a specific project for approval. We're zoning on a direction, not zoning. We're voting on a direction that we would support. Everything beyond that still has to come through P&amp;Z. It still has to come through planning, through the city staff, through the normal public hearing process. So, when we approve a plan, it's this directional.
Right.
Okay. Not forestalling any citizen's input, any citizen's complaint, any citizen's concern. I think we've got to remember that, so that, you know, when we say on the Bishop property, we like the idea of an entertainment complex more than we like residential individual. We're stating that's kind of where we would support. But we're not saying exactly what it is, because we don't know. Okay, so I think it's just something for us to remember and for anyone who's listening or watching, you know, we're voting on directional issues. We're not voting on anything that says this is going to happen tomorrow.
The comp plan is a assemblage of ideas and guidelines and direction. It's not a legislative document that entitles anything. And you'll notice that Ashton did not say we had any recommendations for zoning changes. That's not our prerogative. And really, everything that we're doing, if there are these overlay districts or whatever, we're trying to work within those. But y'all are the ones that make all the final decisions, just like you said, John.
Anything else from anybody? Well, on behalf of everybody, thank you all for the presentation, for all the work you've put into it thus far. Looking forward to the draft. And for P&amp;Z, thank you all for joining us tonight and listening in and digesting it all. I'm sure the council would appreciate any feedback or comments that you guys might want to share at some point between now and when this is all wrapped up, whenever that might be. And residents can rest assured that, you know, they can, I'm hoping that this will be available, at least digitally, where they can consume it. And then, if they want to contact us individually or collectively, they can certainly do that, too. If there's nothing else, council's adjourned.
Thank you all.
Please.
Adjourned.
Thank you.